Everybody.
This conference will now be recorded.
My name is Ann Velisis. I'm the mayor of the city of Port Orford, and I welcome all my fellow council members this evening. We are going to open this meeting, the May 15th meeting of the Port Orford City Council, at 5:01. And we'll begin with a call to the roll call. Counselor Lovendahl.
Here.
Counselor Rask.
Here.
Counselor Burns.
Present.
Counselor Pogwizd.
Counselor Brennan.
Here.
Counselor Webb. Okay, woo-hoo, very good. Okay, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is unified by the United States of America to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Laura's here.
Okay, I would like to entertain a motion to enter into executive session under ORS 192.6602D to conduct deliberations with persons designated by the governing body to carry on labor negotiations, and ORS 192.6602H to consult with council concerning the legal rights and duties of a public body with regard to current litigation or litigation likely to be filed.
So moved.
Second.
I'll call for the vote. Counselor Brennan.
Yes.
Counselor Burns.
Yes.
Counselor Pogwizd.
Jim, yes.
Counselor Lovendahl.
Yes.
Counselor Rask.
Yes.
Counselor Webb.
Webb, yes.
Okay, let us, I will turn it over to Melissa.
You're welcome.
To resume the meeting.
This conference will now be recorded.
Meeting is once again recording, and I'll be right back.
Okay, welcome everybody, and thank you for your patience in letting us complete our executive session. So we have already done our roll call and Pledge of Allegiance and all that stuff. So if you guys were hoping to do the Pledge of Allegiance tonight, you didn't get to do it with us. So we are on to number three, item three of the agenda, and we have some additions. We have two applications for appointment that need to be added to the consent calendar. One is we have an application for Lori Proudie for the Budget Committee, and one for, I don't, Sarah, can you tell me the dean's last name?
Ricky.
The dean Ricky for the Parks Commission. That will be added to the consent calendar. And I think Joseph provided those, yes, they're in our packets.
Do we have James, Laura, and Lori?
Yes, but they are not related.
Okay.
So we will.
I just was curious.
Yes, no, we had that, Joseph had that, that question too. So those are added as H and I to the consent calendar. I also want to mention in the additions to the agenda, just a matter of correction, which is there's a little bit of a disparity in numbers between, I don't know if you noticed this, the numbers on the agenda and the numbers in the packet. And so that means that numbers, the consent calendar is number seven, public hearing is number eight, but let's see, yeah, but when you get into these, when you get into them in the packets, the numbers are a little different. So just highlighting that, that might be a little confusing. Thank you.
Thank you.
And as Joseph said, we have an update to 10A that some of us are getting now. We'll deal with that when we get to it. Okay, so anybody else have any other additions to the agenda or amendments or anything? Okay. With that, we will move on, we don't have any presentations, we'll move on to citizen concerns for non-agenda items. And as a reminder, the citizen comment portion of this agenda is an opportunity for the council to listen to citizens, but it's not really a place for dialogue. So citizens are allowed up to three minutes to present information. And we will probably, we might either ask our city administrator to get back to you, or we might at the end of the meeting, if there's a topic we want to pick up, we might, might do it that way. So with that, do we have, thank you so much, Joseph. Oh, did we have a?
No one signed up yet. So.
Okay.
Mine has, they are.
So Toby, we can let you stay up there, and Troy will let you go number two.
Okay. Well, same.
That's right, you can do that, that's fine.
May I say two sentences before we start?
Okay, yes.
I'm here to talk about an Idaho neighborhood, Idaho Street neighborhood, but I live on China Mountain Road, and so you might wonder, what am I doing? And I just want you to know that I'm a part-time property manager for our house.
Can you please sit down and speak into the microphone?
Start over, or did you hear enough of that?
We heard it, but for purposes of recording in the public, we need you to state your name and just explain things.
Okay.
Thank you, Toby.
So anyway, I'm here because I'm a part-time property management of a house on Idaho Street, and I'm there almost daily, so I've come to know the neighborhood, and that's why I'm here. Secondly, wait, okay, I'm gonna stop there. This is my colleague Kate McCollum. Kate is, Kate is uncomfortable with public speaking, and I am not, and so we respectfully request that Kate be allowed to give me her three minutes, and I will adhere strictly to the six-minute rule, if allowed.
Okay.
Okay. I can start it. I already did. I did it for three. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. This is so, oh, you should do that on purpose.
If you need to. There you go.
Okay. I already said I'm Toby Porter. I live at 93580 China Mountain Road, and with me is Kate McCollum of 1637 Idaho Street. We're here tonight not so much to talk about homeless people, but the homed people who live on Idaho Street near the property known as unimproved 16th Street right of way between Oregon Street and Idaho Street. We have two goals tonight. The first is to make sure the city council and the members of the audience here and virtual understand what the conditions for the homed residents of Idaho Street are like day and night. Secondly, we want to, we want certain actions taken to help manage the city-owned property we refer to as Ray's Woods. I will now read some information submitted by three Idaho Street residents. Excuse me. The first one is from Sue and Dave Gleason, who live at 1634 Idaho Street. This is what we observed, they write, nudity, sex acts, drug deals, defecation on bare ground, large trash buildup with related smells, rat infestation of trash piles, fights at bus stations at the bus stop, mindless littering of live cigarette and marijuana butts, verbal threats when approaching our own property line, obscene gestures, loud screaming day and night from mental issue campers, threats of burning us out because, quote, "we were the devil," unquote, trespassing and camping in our front and backyard. It has been suggested by attorney that homeowners file a class action suit for devaluation of property due to negligence and lack of control of said campers. We realize the city has liability insurance if fire or damages arise from said camper, but that does not cover the stress from loss of sleep and the aggravation of living next to this mess. Fear has risen on Idaho Street. The second one is from Susan Baller, 1704 Idaho Street. The homelessness is a problem, and the city needs to pay attention to this serious issue. We are faced with tents, trashed, and bodily functions at inappropriate places. Our house value and sellability has diminished. We have a pre-teen daughter whose bedroom is at street level, and we cannot change that. She has woken up at night by homeless people swearing and screaming, and is frightened and unable to go back to sleep. What will happen to my daughter and me when we no longer have the protection of a husband or dad? We moved here 12 years ago, and the Wetlands walkway was a selling point for us. The city seems to care less if this area looks like a dump. I watch visitors drive up, cameras in hand, to see the walkway. They turn around disappointed and leave. Shame on Port Orford. The third is from Kate at 1637 Idaho Street. There is a lack of Port Orford City's council to really address the homeless problem and offer solutions to the seriousness of it. There is no proper facility to house the homeless, no proper medical facility to help with problems, no facility to clean up, no toilet facilities. The city council leaves it to the townspeople to cut back brush and pick up trash on what is deemed city property. There's no proper law enforcement to stop the making and selling of drugs to homeless, and where this action can trickle down to elementary school children. There is a lack of posted rules on the designated city property for homeless to abide by. There's a lack of the council to provide the rules and regulations to all Port Orford citizens. If homeless people cannot and will not follow said rules and regulations, then they need to leave the city for good. And so that brings me to the second part tonight, and that is, we want to address the fact that we know you have to wrestle with new laws and concerns around the issue of homelessness in Port Orford. And as you grapple with this multifaceted problem, we strongly request the following: that the brush be cleared from the current site by the end of May. Gores and Scotch Broom have taken over, and we all know what a fire hazard they are. That a search be made again to find an entirely new location as a designated homeless camp site in Port Orford, a site not in a residential neighborhood. Ms. McCollum and I volunteer to be on that search committee. We request that a resident representative be involved in making the rules for the current site. We want two signs of the rules be placed on the site, one facing Ray's Market and the other on Idaho Street. We understand that the city personnel often do not see the complaints made to the police. We want all complaints to be shared between city and police personnel, and the complainant informed of action taken. Finally, it seems the only recourse residents have is to insist enforcement of the rules stated in section 1210.030B of chapter 12.10, reasonable time, place, and manner regulations on camping in areas open to the public, procedures for removal of campsites. It reads, quote, "Notwithstanding the above, no indication of camping can be stored or left unattended on public property between 8:00 a.m. and 1 hour before sunset. During times allowable under the time provision of this code, those experiencing homelessness may use small tents or other temporary means of portable shelter that must be fully removed daily without impacting the grounds," unquote. Given that the property we call Ray's Woods is the designated Port Orford camp for homeless persons, and there is apparently nothing the residents of Idaho Street can do, we want steps taken to ensure that the codes and the rules to regulate camping are enforced. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Toby, very much for sharing those comments. Would you be able to give us your written comments too? So would you share that with us?
You mean this package here?
Yeah, and the things that you were requesting.
Yes, and I also have other, from other residents that I will include.
Okay, thank you very much.
Can we, can I get a copy of those?
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to get a copy of those, and I'll digitize them, and if anybody else would like them, we'll share that, or ask Joseph to share it. Okay, Mr. Russell.
Good evening. For the record, Troy Russell, I'm a resident of Bandon, Oregon. I'm here this evening to let, inform you that Elk River Property Development, LLC, is requesting a one-year extension for conditional use permits 1602 and 1603 per Port Orford Municipal Code 17.32.060. The current term for the, those COPs runs from June 16, 2024. ERPD has an active application with Oregon DEQ and is awaiting a memorandum of understanding with the city of Port Orford to move forward, move that application forward. City of Port Orford is awaiting the results of a feasibility study, assessment by Civil West Engineering, before you guys can consider an MOU. These, these steps take time, which is why we're requesting an extension. Thank you. Any questions?
Yeah, do you, I have an question for you. Have you sent that letter in to us officially, so we have that?
I, I have.
Great, excellent.
But this is an edited version with one additional sentence.
You got the date on it? You got the date on it?
It does, yeah. And I wanted to be on record this evening before the goalposts move, maybe as early as later this evening.
Okay, thank you, Troy. Anybody, do we have anybody online who is interested to have a citizen comment tonight? Hearing none, we move on to anybody that wants to make a citizen comment for items on the agenda? Not including the public hearing? Anyone online? Okay, hearing no interest in further citizen concerns, we'll close that part of the agenda and move on to number seven, the consent calendar. Thank you. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve items in the consent calendar.
I'll move to approve the consent calendar.
I'll second it.
Do we have any discussion? I did not see the staff recommendation in F, the RW for charter. Is there any, did you see that one? The one that's up for Tishner on, yeah.
Yeah, I signed it.
You just need to know more detail.
What's that?
You needed more, need more detail.
Yeah, no, I went and looked at it and said that was fine, marked everything out, and then, sorry. I thought I signed that right away, permit, saying.
Okay, it's not in the packet, so I just was wanting to make sure that.
Yeah, I did, it's good to go.
He did sign it. I have copies of the sign-off sheet. Some counselors have it, if they got it today. Other, once it was brought to my attention, I made sure to get it in there, so I'll go get the copies that I have.
That's fine, Joseph, as long as, as long as it's confirmed that that, that step happened.
Yeah, it's just a minor fiber run, you know, a couple hundred yards.
Right, okay. So hearing no other, any other discussion? Hearing none, I will call for the vote. Counselor Lovendahl.
Yes.
Counselor Rask.
Yes.
Counselor Brennan.
Yes.
Counselor Pogwizd.
Jim, yes.
Counselor Burns.
Yes.
And I will make the note that Counselor Webb has left this meeting about, I think about 6:05, and will, to go to a different meeting, so he is not voting on that. Okay, thank you all. Now we are moving on to item number eight, which is we're going to be opening up, the reopening our public hearing regarding updates to the Port Orford Municipal Code Title 17, zoning, and Title 16 subdivisions. And just briefly, the council's role here is to review and deliberate on these proposed revisions in housing and zoning. As we know, the city council's previously received and reviewed a staff report from Crystal Shoji explaining the revisions that the city planning staff and the city planning commission have collaborated on, and the reasoning for those revisions. The council's previously met and deliberated on the first half of the proposal, and tonight we'll focus on the second half of the proposal. So anyway, at this point, I will, let's see, open up the public testimony, the public hearing for this, and we can receive any testimony that, if people have it. So if we have any citizens that would like to make testimony on this topic at this time, please come forward. Do we have anyone online?
Does not look like it.
Okay, well then I'm going to close the testimony at this portion of the meeting, and we will move on to the deliberation, council deliberation. Now, I wanted to just start this by saying that, like, where are we going with this? And, you know, what we have to do with this is we decided we're gonna work on the first half, work on the second half, and that if we don't have, we had been, I think, I'd been thinking if we didn't have that many changes, we could do, make this a first reading, and then make the next one the second reading, and potentially pass it then. But we did not get a clean copy, Appendix A, I don't think, occurred, so what I'm, what I'm thinking makes sense for us would be to just go through the second half and then get a clean copy the next time, and then if anybody, if there's any outstanding questions, we have that opportunity to do it and move it forward in that schedule if.
Is Crystal present?
It does not appear so.
But we have, I noticed we have our planning chair, Greg Thielan, here. Thank you for coming, Greg. We might, I'm sure he might be able to answer questions for us if we need them.
So will the new copy, it's gonna be different than this copy?
Well, it would be like, you know, last time we made some recommended changes.
And we'll just have those highlighted.
Yeah, and then this time we might have some recommended changes, so then at the end we'd have like, okay, this is what we have, and if there's any outstanding questions that we have that we didn't resolve, I think we, we had a good session last time, there might be a few outstanding questions this time, and if we, if Greg doesn't know the answer, we have the opportunity to get the question to Crystal or to Joseph and then move forward. So with that, we are starting on chapter 17 to 8, Planned Unit Developments. And in my copy, it's page 36, I don't know, I, do we all have the same copy?
Mine is 38.
Yours is 38, okay, so we'll, we'll just have to go on with the chapter 17 to 8.
Mine's, mine's on 37.
Okay.
Actually, it's at the bottom of 36.
I'd like to ask a first question, which is, what is the difference between this planned unit, planned unit development section and the part that's 16.1600 that's at the end of this?
Is, oh, which is also planned unit development?
Yes.
Yeah, so what, one of them is kind of what you bring, is how you bring it, it's a, it's a, it's a technical piece, what you, what you're expected to bring, and the other is the process that you go through to do it. So the first one, the first one is like what you, all the things you have to, to do, it's kind of, there's a reason for it, and I don't really know why, but it's broken into two parts, it always has been broken into two parts.
Okay.
So which was, what was the number of the other one?
16.16.
It's the last thing in here, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, planned unit development, you'll see it was all crossed out, and it's just been cleaned up. So, so for example, on the, at the second one, so as I said, as I understand it, the first one is this is what you need to bring, this is what you need to consider, this is how it's gonna, what you need to do. And then if you look at the tentative plan on O2O on page 55, it kind of gives you the rules. Any plot, any plat, replat, number B, A, just for example, any replat, boundary adjustments or partitioning that is necessary for the PUD use shall be part of the consolidated application. It's like the paperwork that holds the, that makes the plat work, that makes it official.
Okay, so it's just in two different sections because that's the way it started or something?
Yeah, so it's the, it's, it's talking about the plat. The plat is the official document that, that will be used in the future. It's like it goes on record with the county, it's how they do the plat. These are the things that have to be on the plat. The number H, the names of the adjacent subdivisions and partitions shall be included. They're naming what goes on this document.
Okay.
That's, and for some reason they split it up, and that's just the way they do it.
Any other questions under Planned Unit Development? I just have one other little one, bottom of page 38, number 10, it says, economic and supporting data to justify any proposed non-residential elements? And I was just wondering, what was that, and what are you envisioning with, because aren't these mostly residential?
That was brought up to me too, and the, and the only category that I can think of is if you were to have a, a residential facility of some sort, and you had a, an accessory, an accessory building that was like for a laundry or something, or a maintenance shack, or something like that, it's not residential, because you don't live in it.
Okay.
So I would get, but that's all I'm thinking, that's all I can think.
That's why I was wondering if Crystal was here, because I had some questions. I already talked to Greg, and he cleared up a lot of things for me, and that was one of mine.
Okay.
And on that same page, on item two, the proposed land uses building locations and housing units with density calculations that comply with the zoning or explanation of a vision to meet a housing need. I really didn't understand where we were going with that. I don't know if it's that important, but it just didn't make any sense to me.
And where is this again?
Page 30, well, 38.
It's for you guys, and it's.
It's under procedure, so it's 17.2802O, procedure, goes through application, and then there's a whole bunch of, under the former B, a bunch of things.
1 to 14.
137.
139.
My, my take on that, when I read that, is the idea that if a planned unit development is for, like, a neighborhood that's gonna be, let's say, around a natural feature or a cluster or something, that, that there's kind of a reason to, like, explain what you're gonna do and why, you know, as opposed to just doing it, right? I mean, I don't know, that's kind of how I read that, but.
I think in, in the case of like an overlay zone, or if there were, I think what it's saying is if it's obvious, you don't need to do any calculations, but I, this one is not, this is a good one for Crystal, and I really don't, I don't have a good answer.
Okay, so why don't, we'll just make a note of those questions.
You have some, Joseph?
I would just like to confirm you're still talking about number two, the one that talks about population density.
Yes.
I believe that the reason we put that in there was because if you're doing a planned unit development, the, like, total density for the lot needs to conform to the overall density for the zone, but it doesn't need to necessarily be like a unit-by-unit density. So you could have more people on one side of the lot if it retains natural features that would, you know, that would prevent it from building on other portions of the lot. So it would be more dense than it should be on the one side, but there's a bunch of extra space, so it averages out to be the correct population density.
Of the 5,000.
Yeah, of the 5,000 square foot per residence, I believe, is what it was.
Okay. Thank you, Joseph.
It's still a little confusing to me, but I don't know that it makes it, it's a big deal.
Okay.
One way or the other.
Okay, so any other things on that first planned unit development thing? If not, we can move forward to the, let's see, conditional uses, conditional use, which is chapter 17.32, on my page 41, and on your page near that.
And I don't know if it's been taken out, if I'll just make a remark here, on conditional uses, item B on page 42, it says church, healthcare facility, retirement facility, multi-unit dwelling, if it still says, if it still says that, that is being taken out because the city, because the state requires multi, anything housing to not be a conditional use. Anything with housing is an outright use. So we caught that as an error, and we may have done that at some point.
We did that, or, yes, we did that in the previous, like, I think our. We did that, or yes, we did that in the previous, like I think our first meeting.
So I just wanted to mention.
Thank you, Greg. Okay.
And I was wondering right at the top on page forty-two, on five, when a new structure is involved, the applicant is advised to request a free application. I don't know why it isn't, they will request.
Shall, you mean, or should, or?
So they can do it or not do it. It's up to them.
It's a good question.
I would imagine if it was something simple, they would just say, well, we don't need, we don't need one. And if it was something complex, they would say, well, it's probably in my good interest to use, to do it. I can get this job done. We can get going faster if I do. So it's an, I would think, I just treat it as an advisory. I don't think there's anything happens if they don't. They still, they don't, they don't pass any steps. It's for their benefit, it would be for their benefit to do it, but I think she.
We're saying that they don't really need to.
They don't have to. I mean, some things are really straight, straight ahead. They can just do it. Some things are tricky. That's what I'm seeing.
And then I had an idea for the fee part of it, that if, it doesn't seem fair if the fee is one fee and somebody comes in with something really simple and then somebody comes in with something really complex. It seemed like we should have an hourly fee for how much time something takes. It would be more fair to everybody, to the city included, because if somebody comes in and takes ten hours and somebody else comes in and takes two hours, we're splitting the difference. And so the person taking two hours is having to pay more and the other one is paying less.
And I think the way it happens now is there's a.
It's ninety-nine dollars.
There's the fee, but then if it does take more, then there's an hourly fee charged.
We do have an hourly fee.
Well, I know like Crystal, like if Crystal has to spend ten hours or something, she'll just tell them. I think in that first meeting, they will say like, this is a big deal. It's gonna, just so you know, it's gonna, I think that's how it works, right, Joseph?
So keep in mind that right now we're talking specifically about conditional use permits. So that's not the ninety-one dollar charge. It's, I believe closer to a ten thousand dollar charge for all of them. And we are currently looking at changing the fee, the fees in the planning department. And that is one of the recommendations we are putting in is that conditional use permits basically have to pay for staff time plus an additional fee. And they have to sign a document saying that they're going to cover any additional professional expenditures like Crystal, or if we need to get an engineer or a geologist or anyone else. So we, thank you for the recommendation. It is being covered at a different, a different time. You'll probably see that next month or in July.
So that's great. And so would, would this particular sentence then still apply even after you guys come up, it's subject to a fee? And so that will be, we'll be okay with that? Great. Okay. Okay. Moving on, the next, oh, any other things about conditional use before we move on? The next one is RV parks. Tim, do you have any questions or advice for us on this?
I had a couple of things highlighted and I spoke to Greg on the phone. I didn't get a chance to meet with him. The, the only thing that kind of jumps out at me is we're requiring a fence or a shrub on the perimeter. And I did look further into that and I think we're doing the same thing on manufactured parks too. My question would be, do we require that of the residential build? And why would be required on one and not the other? It's not a stickler for me because I don't plan on building an RV park. So I'm just, it just seemed kind of weird. And the reason I mentioned it to Greg is, you know, putting a fence up used to not be a big deal, but now it's a, you're talking thousands of dollars to put a fence up.
Upkeep.
Yeah.
And, and what's the point? That's what I, because it's the same. I had it as a question on cluster, cottage clusters. Is, is that appealing even to have a fence between each unit? And like I'm thinking of Cedar Point on Arizona Street, there's like seven homes in there. If there was a fence between each one.
Well, let's wait, let's wait on that one and deal with this idea first. When, when I look at this one on the RV park, I mean, my thought about that fence was just, it's sort of a way to be a good neighbor because if you had a house and you have an RV park next door and people are coming and going or whatever, it would just be a matter of kind of, you know, maybe making a distinction between the commercial operation and somebody's house. So that's kind of how I would see it.
I get that. But as a visual, let's just use a park across the street for an example. Say there was a six-foot fence put all the way around that property. How would that visually look? Would that look?
Terrible.
That's kind of the, I, so I have a fence around my park in a lot of areas because we have, um, we have some traffic on the loop that is, you know, dogs running loose and stuff like that.
Yeah.
I don't like it, but I have it up for that reason. So what I'm saying is a visual thing, it bugs me. I really don't like it. But currently there are one, two, there are three other parks in Port Orford that don't have fences around them anywhere. So that's, that's my only question is do we really want to require that? Do we really think that looks better to have a fence around? I do get your point of view though, and that's, that is a good point of view.
And that is why, I may say, or you want to, when we were doing the RV park planning, that was a consideration because there were houses, it's in a, there's residential, single residential houses. So it's sort of confined it and it was separated as a noise and not as much activity. You don't see as much activity.
Right.
And not as much disruption to the neighborhood. So we, when we also asked for vegetation, as I recall.
So, and the second part of my question is when you require that of the specific entity in RV park, that makes that fence, their fence, when typically in any other application, it's called a good neighbor fence, where both parties pay for the fence. So I have, I have more heartache with that portion of it than I do, um, you know, the rest of it. So you make that fence a responsibility of the park rather than where it should land, both neighbors benefit from the fence, so it's a good neighbor fence. So if it was to be rebuilt, it'd be split by both parties. So just something to think about. I don't know that there's a way to fix it or I don't know if taking it out makes sense or not.
Well, I appreciate your comments and, and I thought about it and I actually called Crystal and ran through some of these ideas. My feeling is that it, that it probably shouldn't be required, but that it should be something that is looked at, that the planning commission could require in the findings.
Right.
In a, in a certain situation, if there was some reason.
Yeah.
But to require it, I think, I think you've, you've hit on, on, on something. So if you all wanted to, so, and as I said to you in the, in the email, uh, safety and sanitation and, uh, you know, fire protection, that's what the state requires. The rest of it's up to us.
Yeah.
Some, most municipalities have a pretty big, several-page RV park list and they often have fencing and they also often have things like that. But I think our, 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 in, our process that we go through to the city is, is good enough that if we, if we point out that those are issues that we may require, that's kind of what the conditional use is about, is fitting it to the situation rather than saying this rubber stamp fits all. So if you all voted to take it out, no, it's, I'm, I'm good with that and I think everybody is. The Crystal, Crystal is too, I'm sure.
Oh, May.
Make it May.
It could change the whole.
That's probably what I would do. And then that kind of leaves it the leisure of the board to make a decision. Like, like I'm going to use my property as an example. So on my property, Mather Street is on one side. So like if I was on the planning commission, I'd probably say, okay, that's a residential side, so we're going to require you to put a fence up in the conditional use, whereas the front of your property is, can be open because there's, you know, Porterford Loop and then, you know, the next property kind of thing. So, you know, I'm, I'm open to all that kind of stuff. And really, it's not that big of a stickler, but I think changing it to May might just solve the whole problem, be done with it.
It sounds like you guys had that specific instance and were able to address it that way. So that sounds like it's.
Joseph?
I'm just putting this out there for counsel consideration. Why not make it a landscaping plan covering the setback area shall be included within the plans? This may have an additional requirement of a wooden site obscuring fence and/or a head showing expected annual growth. So that way then they still have to do the landscaping maintenance plan, but we're telling them, we might need you to do a fence.
That's a good, I like that.
Yeah. Okay. That works for me. The only other thing I had was the standards for parking spaces. Well, I'm not even going to go into the guest thing because I don't, I'm not going to get excited about that. Okay. So the only thing, it says that we have to have all-weather striping in an RV park. We don't require that at Dollar General. I mean, we need to take that out of there. I think either that or add it in for everybody. It, it just doesn't make sense to, to single out one entity and make them put stripes in for the parking.
And if I can, if I can mention.
I do have stripes in my park, but I'm just saying it doesn't seem fair to make one park.
I believe the reason that that was required for that, so we, we based it on the park that, that the commission processed through a conditional use permit on, on Madrona there.
Yeah.
They were, um, they wanted to maximize their use of the space.
Right.
And so, and their, in their early plans, they had, they were parking in the, in the fire truck right away. And we wanted to make sure that they were able to mark the spaces so that, so that they would always have fire safety.
Right. Understood.
That was a specific thing, but I don't see any reason to have that as a, as a, in a, to be a, a shall.
Yeah.
A May, a May is.
Okay. Yeah. And I'm, I'm fine with that.
If that's what you guys want or may be required, may be required.
And may be required works in that instance, uh, you know, or you can delineate, you know, like a lot of people put red lines and fire zone and no park, you know, that's typical, that's typically the way you solve those problems in parking lots too.
Or you just don't address it and the, and the, and the commission does it. Because it was, it wasn't addressed. We just, we did it for a specific reason. We just made it up because we didn't want to see that, you know.
Yeah, right. You don't want to see somebody get hurt unnecessarily, but really, I mean, really the fire marshal and the fire department should have those stipulations too. You, you know, they should make them paint fire zone or a red line.
That's what I was in favor of was a red line.
Right.
Fire, you know, yeah.
That's all I really have, man. I mean.
They may or fire, from what I've seen about fire though, sometimes they, they just do a checkmark. They don't necessarily actually, so I think we do need our planning, I appreciate that our planning commission did that. So what, where did we end up? Where did we end on? What would you like to see there?
I, I, there's nothing I have to see. I just wanted to bring it to, to you folks that I, I think having a durable and dustless surface includes, you could do asphalt or gravel or pavers. It's just the striping portion. I don't know.
Okay. Just so, so end with adequately maintained basically, or end with surfaces?
I think it was switch shall, maybe.
Okay.
Turn shall to maybe would do it.
Yeah.
May.
May be required.
May be required.
And, and I guess I will bring up one more thing. And the only reason I'm bringing this up is because of the dark sky word and it says we're supposed to have, um, you want streetlights two hundred feet from one another. And I, in my mind, that seems super unnecessary.
I agree. I was going to suggest that we just say, streetlights shall comply with the order for code and.
Awesome.
Leave it be.
Yeah.
Because.
Two hundred, I mean, if you really had to do that, it would really like.
Be like a ball field.
Yeah. It would be like a ball field.
And it's a super expensive, and it's super expensive. I think that that, and we may not want that.
And I, like.
You got that, Joseph, or where? Shall? Okay. Okay. Excellent.
On page fifty-four-three, um, site plan criteria C, uh, the RV parks shall be served by city water if available. So are we saying that if it, when would the water not be available?
Like right now? Because we're on curtailment.
But that isn't really what this is saying, you know, this wasn't built around the curtailment or, or maybe we want it to be, but I was just curious.
This park did have a, does have a well, RV park.
We, well, we grandfathered existing wells, but.
Yeah.
But we, um, it looks like if the water is available, that's what would be available. And I think that's the reason why it says water for the RV park should be approved by a state agency would be if it wasn't available and it had to be, you know, you couldn't just hand dig a well and start pumping turbidity out to people, which happens a lot.
And all that is actually covered by state law.
Right.
Which doesn't even need to be in our code.
It is. Unless somebody just hand dug their own well and didn't report it, which.
Didn't report it.
I've been in some parks like that. I've been in some really, I've had water in RV parks across the country over the years.
Okay. Are you okay with that, Greg? Or are you okay with that, Gary?
It's fine, yeah.
Okay. So moving on to cottage cluster, you had a question about the fences in the cottage cluster. I didn't notice that. Where was that?
That's on four.
But I was thinking the perimeter and I think Gary's thinking like in between each.
Yeah. I think, I think it was by the perimeter. Perimeter, right, sir?
Yeah. Truman.
Units shall be separated by fenced yards. That just seems, because you're, you've got these homes closer together.
I mean, if we were to require it there, we would probably want to require it in an ADU situation too, right?
But it's saying the subdivision units. So as I read it, I'm reading the, the whole subdivision, so the perimeter of the subdivision, not in between each unit.
Which number are you looking at?
Four. Or page forty-five.
Cottage cluster subdivisions, units shall be separated by fenced yards.
It is confusing. Subdivisions, units. So it's, it's, if you, if you're reading it, it's saying it's like the, the entire subdivision, the perimeter of it.
But it, it looks like to me the units need to be separated, but that's just.
Maybe we get rid of, get rid of units and then so, shall, have a perimeter fence or just change.
Or may be required?
I think may probably serves as good of a purpose. I don't know.
How about maybe?
It needs to be and maybe we require it because of certain reasons.
How about may be required to have a perimeter fence?
And Joseph has his hand up, Ben?
Yes, Joseph. Thank you.
All right. So I'm not sure if we could do a maybe in this section because it's not a conditional use, it's a planned unit development.
Okay.
But.
But it says it's authorized through a conditional use permit.
Oh.
I mean, it's a.
Yes. Then it would be, um, we could do a maybe there. My reading of this and what I remember from the planning commission meetings is that it was meant to be for in between the units and it was to prevent basically someone from sardining in a bunch of units where you could basically look out your bedroom window and see your neighbor's, you know, entire bedroom and give everyone a little bit of space. I might be misremembering that though.
That was, that was what, what the topic was, was, these are, these are close. So we thought that landscaping or, or a fence is reasonable. I mean, we have fences around our properties, most of, a lot of us do for privacy. So it seemed reasonable.
Yeah. Um, also in here, it doesn't mention a fence height like the other one does, so it doesn't necessarily need to be like, it does.
It says ten feet of landscaping, but I don't know if that's length or height.
No, it's, it would imagine be length.
Yeah.
And then the fenced yards would then show, you know, this, this area around the cottage goes with this cottage, the area around that cottage, that cottage, you know, helping delineate a little bit more about where the actual lines are because it's not like there are actual property lines on cottage clusters. And then every. And then everyone has a personal space as well as the communal space of courtyards or whatever other facilities a cottage cluster would want.
So you couldn't even put up a fence if you bought one of these little clusters of three? You couldn't, you couldn't fence your little club, your, your personal unit off.
Well, that's what they're saying they want to, that's actually what the intent was actually to do that, right? Or you mean, you're saying that to put it around three sides or?
So, um.
I'm just picturing it between each place, not a.
Kind of like a ten foot tall fence.
You'd also be a four foot fence.
Yeah.
Goes ten feet.
Yeah, it, it, I mean, defined fence is.
Right.
It's not defined.
I mean, in a lot of cities and stuff, you have small housing developments with homes really close and they still have a fence in between them. And it's not unattractive. It's just unattractive when people start letting their debris build up along the fence line.
Going to Counselor Pogwitz's question, if you were to be renting a cottage cluster or purchase a cottage in a cottage cluster, I believe you would have to basically go through the landowner to, if you wanted to do a different fence or anything like that. Or if there's any sort of governing body for the cottage cluster, like a homeowners association.
And are these, is that how these things generally work? Is that somebody would, they would be individually owned as opposed to like the developer would develop the cottage cluster? And then you could buy one of them and you'd own like your little fenced area and some of the common area, right? That's sort of how it's designed?
Or you would, I don't believe you would own the land.
Okay.
It would, it would be a common, like an HOA or condominium.
Like a mobile home.
Like a mobile home park, yeah.
Oh, yeah, you would like an RV park.
Right.
Okay, so it sounds like your intention was to have little fences in between units, right? Is that what we're?
It was a privacy, it was a privacy issue and, and it, so if everybody's good with that, I'm fine, but I just.
Well, let's make it a little clearer because it sounds like it's not clear. So just say cottage cluster units shall be separated by fenced yards, right?
Or maybe units in cottage cluster subdivisions. That would make it clearer, I think.
Yeah.
Units in cottage clusters.
Okay, right. Okay.
Yeah, perfect. Thank you Greg. Okay, any other items on this? I think this is kind of an exciting opportunity to see if we get some of these because they can be attractive and.
Yes.
Uh, you know.
People are living smaller these days.
Good, good things that would be, uh, you know, also just make our community interesting and fit in, I think, well. Okay, moving on, the next item is the time limit on conditional use approval. So.
And for some reason I have a note here and I think Brett brought it up. And it was the first question for Greg at the time. It, it says should be determined by city councils, all as I wrote. It's, it's on.
Oh.
Item B and I don't recall what it was about, but maybe I can remember.
I remember what it was is that Brett was saying he wanted city council to have discretion on this. And, uh, he thought that was important.
Is this an extent, on an extension?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
And I actually looked it up. If you look on the next page, page forty-seven. At the very top of the page, appeal of a planning decision, appeal of a planning commission decision on conditional use permit is subject to all requirements of seventeen oh four two hundred. Right of review through, to, and that is city council.
Okay, so it's covered.
It's in there, yeah.
I just wrote his note on here when people were speaking and I remember he said it somehow. I don't know how with all that's happened to me in the last.
I wrote it down in the same spot, right at the same time.
And I think, you know, one of the big questions is, you know, we know that, um, Mr. Russell has had concerns about will this apply to that conditional use permit and such? And, um, you know, I wondered if we should, you know, ask our lawyer about that, but I think that we don't, I mean, we could ask her. Um, and or we can wait till it comes up. I think there is a concept called the goalpost, uh, concept where when you start something, you're cut, I mean, you're kind of, the rules apply from when you start. And I don't know if that would apply in this case. So I don't know if you guys discussed that in the planning commission.
The way it is, we can, we can either approve or deny an extension. There's no criteria. Just gives it a criteria.
Yes, yes, no, that's true for moving forward. The question is for moving forward or for now.
So just to throw out another piece of information, so I've done a little research on, on that because laws do change. And I think it was measure fifty-fourth came out in Oregon a few years ago and, and some zoning issues changed. And there were lawsuits, uh, the, the municipalities were requiring the new, the new guidelines. And it, and it came down to the term vested use, that it, it, whether the property had. Uh, uh, vested use, vested, vested interest, whether they had a vested interest. And it was, in, in generally in case laws, I understand it, if, if they have invested some percentage, like ten or twenty percent of the total cost of the, of the thing in it, they are then protected. But if they've done nothing, they're subject to the, but whether, I'm not a lawyer, I'm just saying that that is out there.
I, I think that, I think the bottom line is this is prospective.
Yes, and this is.
Bottom line, this is, we've had issues, people have been concerned, this sets really great criteria and I'm sure, it seems like you guys have thought it through.
Makes it really clear.
Makes it clear.
We tried not to think about that specific case when we did this. This is both, this is kind of the one size fits all.
Perspective.
Cause it seems like within, in a five-year period, a lot of things could change.
Yes.
It'd be good to reapply.
Yeah.
Just to make sure everything is clear.
We have that, this gives that opportunity a little bit more clear. Okay, any other questions on that one? Or the next one, revocation of a permit?
Oh, what page is that on now?
That's the following, that's just directly after.
Oh, that is our, on forty-seven, I was ahead of you.
I had a thing, if you're, the site plan review, that's what you're on?
Just to make sure there's no questions about the previous, then we can move on to the site plan review.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, Greg, what would you like to say about the site plan review?
Uh, well, I just noticed in my ninetieth rereading of this today, that on seven, on page forty-eight, seventeen thirty-three oh five oh. A, it says the site plan shall be drawn to a legible scale and I would change that should be drawn legible.
Yes, good.
I would recommend that we, that we do that if y'all wanted to do that.
Oh, okay.
That's the bed, yes, absolutely.
Very good.
I have a few little tiny, just like typos that I, I think I'll share with you just another time. I don't think it's worth time, but. I love to make sure we don't get typos and little confusing tidbits into the code. It's a great opportunity to fix it. Okay. So anything else in the site plan review?
This, this goes on to forty-nine.
I, yep, forty-nine.
I had mentioned it to Greg, um, on F to take out one of the at those.
Yeah.
Greg's got that.
Oh, yeah.
Which, what are you saying, can you say that again?
On F, the end of that paragraph and presented at the, at the site plan review meeting.
Oh, yeah. You got at the twice. Yeah, great, thank you. Let's see, on the next page for T. I think we need to just say signing shall comply with that part of the municipal code and lighting shall comply with these sections. I don't know why it just says to comply. Every other section in here says shall, and so we should just say that.
Oh.
Signs shall comply with the sign code, lighting shall comply with the lighting code.
Shall.
I mean, we can just change this to shall. It's a little bit weird thing to say signing shall comply with this section fifteen oh six as a, but I think, I think it's adequate. Just, that's the easiest way to do it.
I think technically the word is signage.
Yes, yeah, let's change it to signing, signage.
So the light on a sign, the lighting wouldn't, couldn't go all over the place.
Right.
I think on.
And shall be shown on the site plan. Yeah. And shall be shown on the site. Yeah. And, thank you Melissa. So Joseph, just since you were out to, can I give you those? T. Signage.
Should comply with.
Shall. Signage shall comply. And lighting shall comply. And then after fifteen point seven. Add and. Shall be shown on the site plan.
Thank you.
So, so when you get a little bit further, oh, that's a manufactured. It says that lighting shall comply with the city's municipal code.
Okay, so on to the next, uh, there's no one on that. We've got the Battle Rock specific criteria and then the manufactured park dwelling specific criteria. It looks like B and D are redundant. What? B and D, yeah. Of, uh. And the two hundred feet along, I don't, you didn't like the two hundred feet before, so I don't know if you like it now. I think we should just say.
Here it says no closer than two hundred feet. So I think we were trying to keep them far apart, but if you allow people to put them at two hundred feet and they put them at two hundred feet, it's going to be like a, it's going to be like in a ball field.
No greater, I think we should just say lighting shall comply with the city's municipal code and call it good.
Yeah.
And in B, and then we get rid of D.
Okay.
Cause that's basically says the same thing. And then.
I'm assuming we have a, a code on, uh, distance of fire hydrants on E. Designating parking shall be shown on the site and fire hydrants are required. I believe that's in code.
Yeah, that should be in the subdivision code. It'll be standard anyway.
So I want to go back, go down to number F here. This says, and since we're comparing it with the RV park, the RV park was the one that said they wanted, you know, like stripes of a certain type, that we got rid of that. But this one says with approved drainage, why didn't it say approved drainage in the RV park? It would seem like that would be a great thing to make sure that your drainage works. I mean, if you'd want to make it work, obviously, but.
It's in another pla- it's in general.
Okay.
RV parks.
Okay.
Drainage, uh, surface water runoff is stated.
Great.
Have ponds and mud, ponds.
The other one here that I thought, I was just wondering about is I, kind of the whole section about I where.
That either, and Greg and I talked about it, I think Greg's got a, take the either out.
Which one out?
On, on I, the bottom of the page.
Oh.
Uh, shall. Shall within thirty days be replaced with another approved manufacturer. Take out the either.
Oh, yeah, right.
It was kind of a conjunction of two sentences, I think. Scrivener.
So I was just wondering, well, keep going, you go.
I don't understand I, to be honest with you. The owner of the lot shall agree that any manufactured dwelling that is removed from its foundation shall within thirty days be replaced with another approved manufactured dwelling. Oh, that's probably, okay. Something's got to make more sense than that.
Yeah, so you can't take it out and just leave the foundation.
Right.
So you don't have to take the foundation out if you're going to, within thirty days, put a new one in.
But the thing that I just, it is kind of like if it's on your property and you're doing this and it takes you more than thirty days. I, I just, it seems a little prescriptive and, and this thing about the city should, can place a lien against the property for the cost. Like I can't imagine with the, oh, would the city go on? Are you talking about to have the utilities disconnected from this specific site? I just don't quite understand this whole little section.
Yeah, I had a little problem, we talked about it, but. Yeah, I'm sure that Crystal probably took this from somebody else's code, but we, we need to understand it, no question.
Is it in the event that, that the person doesn't remove it, that these things happen?
Yeah. I think that property behind raise, there's a found date, there was, David Bass might have taken that out or.
Well, but like, yeah, that's a good example. There's a property, I couldn't think of another one that, where there's a foundation that remains from the past, but would we have? I mean, if an owner just owns a piece of land that has an old foundation on it, we wouldn't be asking people necessarily to take out a foundation, right? I mean.
I wouldn't, I would think so. A solid foundation in a manufactured park could ex, could be like a seven inch slab. And we certainly wouldn't want to force them to take that out because it costs thousands of dollars to pour that slab. And the next manufactured unit that may or may not be coming in within thirty days. I mean, we're setting up timelines that are super strict.
Cause it's an asset to the property.
It is, it's, I don't know that we'd want to make them remove the foundation.
Is there anything, I mean, to me, it just seems like this thing about the utility should be disconnected and stuff, that's important, but you'd think they would just do that.
Yeah, that's just common knowledge.
But, um.
But it's really vague as to what that, right at where it goes into the manufactured home or back to the meter? Is the meat, is it disconnected from the meter?
It depends on what kind of slab. If, if we're talking a slab, the water comes up through the middle of the slab. If we're talking about cinder block area, it could come up in between, it could come up on the outside. I, I think we're getting into.
Details.
We're probably not going to, the city's not going to go in and tear a foundation out, obviously, because like Dan mentioned, there's foundations in the city that have been there for fifty years. And we don't have the abilities, Public Works does not have the abilities to go do that, they're busy.
There's, if there's not a good reason to leave in I, it would seem like maybe we just, is there a reason to leave it in? Or should we ask Crystal or should we?
It is common, but, and I will say that, that in order to make this, in order to make work what is here, we have to put an or after, after I. Because it's saying that it will be replaced.
Oh, yeah, these are subsets, these are subsets of that.
Why do we have to say, we have to say or?
But to think that somebody can get a manufactured home into that place in thirty days is unacceptable.
I don't think that's, uh.
Cause if somebody ordered a mobile, mobile home, it could take a year to build and be delivered, but yet you wouldn't want to force them to tear out a slab that costs five thousand dollars to pour, in my opinion.
Maybe if you guys took it out, it wouldn't bother me.
I think yes, if you just shut out. I mean, I, I don't think the manufactured park owner is going to comply with that, to be honest with you. I mean, because you're asking them to tear up something that's very valuable. Because sooner or later, there's going to be another mobile home in that spot, but it's not going to meet that thirty day timeline, in my opinion.
Or, yeah, or if they build a home down the road and do something completely different, it's, then they take it out.
Right.
Is the reason it was put in is maybe because that the new manufactured home that might come in might not fit that existing foundation? Was that the concern?
I think the idea is that there just would be a pile of cinder blocks sitting there with some junk there or something. I think that, I think it's a.
More of an eyesore.
An eyesore, I think it's an eyesore issue, but you're, you're correct. If it's a valuable, if it's a valid place and we do, do need housing, somebody would plop down in this town for sure, because we need it.
Well, it would happen, but just to put a thirty day timeline on it is, is.
I think just removing I.
Why don't you ditch it?
The whole thing, A, B, C.
We could ask Crystal if there's any, if anybody has any reservation, but I think that's like a fine thing to do if there, if you guys who are on the planning commission don't have any strong. About it.
I mean, we don't even need verbiage about the city putting a lien against a property because that can happen at any time. I mean.
Yep. Okay, moving right along, we're back to where we started, which was the planned unit development sixteen point sixteen point oh one oh at the end. Any questions about that other than that one I asked at the beginning?
And if, actually, if you look at the, uh, the header on the bottom of page fifty-four, it says it's about the plant, the plan and. And if, actually, if you look at the, the header on the bottom of page fifty four, it says it's about the plan, the plan and the final flat. So this is the technical.
Okay.
This is the technical stuff that, that meets the Oregon code.
Okay.
Uh, for, for documents.
Okay. Do we require surveys for these things? I mean.
For subdivisions, they do, yeah.
Yeah.
Anything like that.
So I'm just wondering, I didn't, I just didn't happen to see it here, but it must be here somewhere. I mean. It doesn't look like it says it, it sounds like you'd have to do it probably in order to. To really.
Doesn't our code address that? Have at least two pins visible, right, Joseph?
For building.
Yeah.
I don't know specifically, we, we need to call out that they need a survey if they're doing a flat, because a flat is, at least from what I've seen, done by a surveyor.
And recorded with the county, correct?
Correct. With the county, so. That, however, is not something I feel a hundred percent confident on it saying that they're always done by surveyors. It might be a, you know, potato, potato situation, or it might be a potato, tomato situation, so.
Let's ask Crystal that one.
Some surveyors can do plats.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But they can't all, but item E says the name of, the name and address of architect, engineer, surveyor, landscape architect. That's, that's, that doesn't say the.
Let's ask Crystal, and the reason I bring it up is just from my own little time here, I've just realized there's various times when people are building things without really knowing where their property line is. And when it's a subdivision. I mean, it's a big deal, you really, we should know where your property line is. I mean, and that should, I mean, I would think it should be required.
Well, yeah, because we'd want to know where our roads and right of ways are.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
Right.
It should be a metal. Poke stake.
So I, unless it's already, unless it's required in the other, because there's that.
I'm looking right now.
Other list of things required at the beginning.
Where is it? They've got two ADUs. There it is. Well, subdivisions, there's a section on subdivisions also in our code. Which this is. And it specifically calls for them. I'm gonna look it up right now.
I, I did, was another question I had was I did, I noticed that there is no definition for subdivision in here, is that, is it somewhere else?
It's somewhere, we didn't, we didn't deal with that.
Difference between subdivision and PUD is in here somewhere. Definitely defined.
PUD is a type of subdivision.
And while we're waiting for you to look that up, hey, John, can I ask you one other question? I think maybe we talked about this last time, but I, I have in my notes that we wanted public, I wanted Public Works input on this. This is going back to the ADU thing. It says, for the criteria, an ADU shall obtain separate connections to service pipes for sewer and water from those of the single unit dwelling on the property where the combined fixture count of the ADU in single unit dwelling exceed the lateral capacity specified in Oregon plumbing code. Does that make sense to you? Is that good?
So I wouldn't. I've had, there's a word in there I missed that you said, on the water connection, they should be able to tie into their own service that's going to the house?
You can just read it, I was just wanting to get your input on that.
Yeah. Separate connection to service pipes for sewer and water and those single unit, you're probably were combined fixtures. Single. Exceeds the lateral capacity specified. Yeah, so if the lateral was a three inch and it wouldn't handle an extra bathroom or sink, then yeah, they would have to run a separate one. And that, that time they'd have to pay for a city sewer connection. But I would prefer that they used their current laterals and water services. Now, they could meter, they could buy a meter from us and if they wanted to meter that ADU, they could plum it in line. But I don't want to, I wouldn't want to add one to everyone that was built, because all of a sudden our books go up, it gets confused, one address, this, you know what I mean? Multiple meters on addresses are a real pain, but I, and plus, the least amount of holes in our pipeline is always best for infrastructure with the way it is.
Even in the sewer, I mean, you would, you'd have, we'd be cutting in the road all over the place.
It'd cost, it'd cost a homeowner thirty grand probably, maybe even with the six thousand, they could have thirty, thirty-five into it, depending on where it's located. So I would say using their service lateral. And most service laterals are, well, in old days, they were six inch, so there's a lot of four inch and that'll handle like a thirty-five hundred square foot home. So there shouldn't be an issue. I mean, think about an ADU unit, if it's, if it's governed for what it is, is a very small living, six hundred and fifty square foot, one bedroom, one bath, maybe a sink and a small kitchen. So they're not gonna generate a lot of flow. National average water use for a person is kind of interesting is they estimate a hundred gallons per person per day. Well, it's more like about fifty to sixty-five gallons in reality, but they use that number to calculate sewer tanks and everything else. But a single person with the national average, they would just equate to you using three thousand gallons a month for everything that, every water use, showers, baths, laundry, whatever. But I've seen a lot of places around here that standard two thousand gallons, so I'd say it's about a half of that.
Okay, so is there anything that we have to specify though? Like if we wanted to put in like in the code, or is that something that can be handled protocol? Like if we're going to plumb in a second meter? Cause one of the things I can understand where we wouldn't want to charge somebody like the major hookup for this, but I could also see where we would want to put them on a separate meter and have them, you know, to cover like operation costs and things like that.
Yeah, even if they do a second meter, if they tie it in, for example, to a second, to a, to a home line that's already going there on the other side of the meter, then it's gonna be on the homeowner to do it, we'll provide the box and the meters, so we use all standard meters, but the cost is minimal. You're in a T online service line going to a home. So there's really not a lot of cost for us. We cover our cost just by the purchase of the meter and the box.
We charge that, yeah, we charge that.
Yeah, yeah, and, you know, we get to an hour labor on there for everything else.
So that can be handled not in code, but as a matter of protocol?
I think so, as policy.
And I think the key, at least in, in looking at this, you know, if you had something that had to be vented or you had certain number of things, as long as the two units together fit within that code, well, then that would be okay. But if it were to exceed those things, well, then you would have to, and no plumber worth his salt's gonna let you do something if it's gonna be above the capacity.
There were three bathrooms and.
Right, you have to have X size of vents or whatever.
Well, I just wanted to make sure to get your input and just see if there was anything we had to do.
We just talked about that today, actually, we were just discussing it, so.
Great. And then, so that almost brings us to the end of this discussion. And I wanted to bring up another topic that has come up for us about this is what do we do with ADUs? How do we handle water since we are in curtailment? And it had been suggested by Jared Thielin that the existing curtailment ordinance probably handles it, because the, which I'm gonna read to you. It says, regulation of applications for new water service. No new additional further expanded or increased in size water service connections, water service lines, pipeline extensions, mains or other water service for entities, utilities of any kind shall be allowed, approved or installed during a second, third or fourth level of curtailment. So.
Joseph had a, not to interrupt, sorry, Joseph had some pretty good language.
Okay. What would you recommend?
Um. I would recommend something along the lines of ADUs would not be permitted during levels two, three or four of water curtailment concern. Unless the amount of water fixtures before and after the creation of the ADU is the same. It's something along those lines. I'd definitely get better language when I was actually typing it up, but the idea is basically you can do an ADU as long as you aren't creating any new water usage. So if you had an extra kitchen sink and a extra bathroom in your house, you could get rid of them and then put them in an ADU. And because the amount of bathrooms and kitchen sinks is the same before and after, you can do the ADU. Or you could potentially build a wall in a house to section it off.
How, how would you actually enforce that though? Or like if somebody came in and said, oh, I'm gonna take out my kitchen sink and do this? I mean, like, how would you actually be able to?
So I believe it's when county does their inspections of housing, one of the things that they do is they make sure to check water fixtures to make sure that the pipes are the right size for the house. At least, you know, that's my understanding.
Okay.
For the number of, what do they call, what do they call the sink and the bathroom?
Water fixtures.
Fixtures.
Okay. Well, what I would, what I would, what I would suggest, as I said at the beginning of this, you know, we have the opportunity, we would have the opportunity to consider this the first reading and move forward with adopting this the second time. But I feel like we've made lots of changes, little changes, none of them are huge, that it might make sense to just get a clean copy and at the next meeting, plan to.
Read it twice.
Well, then we'd have to, that would be the first reading the next time, right?
Yeah, I mean. Is there a rush, other than we have to close this out?
No.
We want to feel good about this.
No.
Oh, no, and I think it, it sounds like all the conversations we've had have been good conversations, but I even questioned because of that curtailment issue, whether we would separate the ADU portion from the code portion. And vote on it later when we came out of curtailment, but it sounds like you have it covered with the verbiage you just read.
Yeah, and I asked Crystal about that after, because I, we, we discussed that a little bit last time. And she said that, since she's been around Port Orford long enough to know, that since we have invested so much money in this effort, we got a grant, we did the mailing, we did all this public process. And that if we don't pass it, we will have, we basically have to go back and spend a lot of that money again. And so it's better to adopt it with the.
As long as it seems like we've got.
Conditions, if we can cover it, so.
If I can make a suggestion.
Yeah, please.
It doesn't seem like that particular, addressing the ADU water situation hookup, it shouldn't, shouldn't go in our code. That should be a separate, if, if you are going to have a motion on that, I would have that be a separate. Because you're basic, this is legacy. This code is legacy, I mean, it goes on.
Well, yeah, it's addressed in the curtailment anyway.
Well, but that's the thing.
You've addressed that curtailment outside of the code.
Yeah.
So, so address it again outside of the code, I would say.
Well, but the thing is, it's addressed in the curtailment, but the suggestion that I think Joseph was making is putting it into this code. Where, where were you suggesting to put it?
If I, that the verbiage that I was recommending would probably be best to do in another ordinance to further amend our curtailment code. Basically then saying that the ADU wouldn't be permitted as part of that curtailment. Yeah, it, it might not be necessary with the current language covering new or expanded use of the utilities. At least that's the, I would agree with that interpretation.
It would seem to me that if, if, if the planning department pointed out to anyone who was going to get an ADU, point them to the water, the water curtailment ordinance.
Yeah.
That would be.
That'd be the easiest way.
Yeah.
And that we don't have to do anything, I mean, we have it.
And they could still build it.
Yeah.
They could still build it and have a bedroom, put a kitchen and all that stuff.
And the curtailment.
It wouldn't, it wouldn't stop and they could hook up later, yeah.
Yeah, and.
I'd be interested in seeing how many of these we get, really, I'd be interested.
Yeah.
I'd like to do one.
We already have.
We have, yeah, we have.
I think what we primarily see at the beginning would be a lot of fix it tickets where people already had them, but now that they're permitted in our code, they want to get it on the books.
Yeah, is that actually a thing? I mean, are these, we have some that are going to be like considered non-conforming uses, so what happens there? I mean, would there be the expectation that people do want to get them on the books, like if they're gonna sell it or whatever, they might still try to be?
Yes, a lot of people would, if, if they are able, I imagine a lot of people would want to get it, you know, noted that they have it because it does add value to their home and their property. And one of the things that we're looking at right now is potentially adding a fix it ticket, B is what I would call it, in planning, which is basically you did something without the proper permitting. We're not gonna, you know, go make people tear things down unless it's really egregious, so instead file the paperwork, get it on the books, it'll be a, an additional fee. And that, you know, that's my, what I think is best unless, you know, like I said, people are doing something really egregious that does warrant more harsh reprimand. Yeah.
I have one question.
Yeah.
And it was, it was on page thirty-six, and I think we started on page thirty-seven or eight, but I have a note here, so an ADU. We don't have a lot size other than what our code, our specific zoning says about it?
Yes.
So if somebody had a very, very small lot, they could squeeze one of these ADUs on or?
There are no lots in R one and R two that are smaller than five thousand square feet.
Okay.
That's code. Perfect. And we know, we didn't touch that, that's.
Okay, that answers my question then.
There is one, on Hamlet.
That's specifically where I was thinking, actually.
Yeah, they, this was before I was around, but I remember they came to council or planning and to ask to cut their five, their lot.
Oh, right.
Yes, right on the corner of Hamlet and Wyoming.
Fifteen and fifteen and a half.
Yep.
Yep, absolutely.
We probably won't do that again. We did, we do have one.
They'd have turned the house down though that was on.
Yeah.
So.
But they may not be able to do an ADU on that one because it's not.
Yeah, they wouldn't be able to do it on either lot.
That, that's addressed in, in letter A. No ADU shall be permitted on a lot that's less than a minimum lot size currently required by specific zoning, zoning applicable to the subject property. So they wouldn't be able to.
Okay, and I have one last one, I have two on page forty-five.
Forty-four?
Which is, there is something about the cottage clusters, it says cottage clusters shall not be used as vacation rentals. And I'm wondering, like everything else about vacation rentals, we've put into the STR code, so why is this one in the land use code?
That's a good question.
Well, the ADU says the same thing, correct?
Well, no, this is, oh, the AD, no, it doesn't, we're gonna pass, there's a separate code that we're gonna pass.
I knew I saw it somewhere, I understand.
But that's gonna be in the STR code.
I remember.
So shouldn't we put, should we put this in the STR code? Or, I don't know, it's a question maybe for Crystal.
So.
There's six places to find.
Since this is in your zoning code, our zoning code. It probably belongs there, I'm just guessing.
Excuse me, I didn't hear the first part of it.
Short term rental code is in our business section.
Yes, right.
That's where the, that's where the no ADUs.
Yes.
No ADUs for short term rentals should be, because it's in the short term rental code, but because. Yeah, you're right, because it's called, it's called a vacation rental and we didn't call it a short term rental, but it is, that's what they are. That's a good question.
Let's put in a question to Crystal on that one, and that would be a minor, maybe we can ask her make, to make a minor recommendation to fix that.
Yeah.
If, if need be, it should be, as, we should change it at least to short term rentals rather than vacation rentals, right?
Maybe that should, in fact, yes, it probably should be tacked on to the one that's on your agenda today.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So let's make a note to ask that of Crystal, and we might want to do that. Okay. Any other?
Yes.
What section was that in?
That's under cottage cluster I, and it's number three. Anything else? Anybody have anything else? Well, I'm, I've, we've done, I feel like we've done a very thorough and good job at this, so thank you everybody for your attention. And what I, what I suggest that we do, as I said, is that we'll, we'll close our deliberation on this now. I am a little bit unclear about whether I need to keep the hearing open or if I can close the hearing at this point. If everybody feels comfortable without taking further public testimony, close the hearing. And then at the next meeting, we will review the ordinance and consider it our first reading. And then we will, the following meeting, consider it the second reading.
It shouldn't take you much time either.
Since we've already done everything.
I think I would keep the hearing open, because you may want to make a change next time too.
But, okay, do, we have to keep the hearing open, you think, in order to make any? But, okay, do, we have to keep the hearing open, you think, in order to make any, when you're a minute?
Open another hearing?
It doesn't hurt, you can keep it, you can keep it open for months.
Okay, well, let's just keep it open to be on the safe side. I was going to ask Crystal, so we will, what is, how do you say this? We will temporarily.
Suspend.
Close this hearing, and we will continue it at the next meeting in our next month. So where are we now? Yep. One second, excuse me. Yeah, we'll be carrying it over to the next time. Okay, sorry, I'm looking for mine.
Departmental reports?
Okay. Yes, so moving on to departmental reports, yeah, Joseph.
Just a matter of record, District Council has agreed via consensus to continue the public hearing to the next city council meeting, which is approximately June 19.
June 18th, actually.
Thank you.
Yes, June 18th.
We have to specify the date and time.
We need to do that. Okay, okay, we are going to be continuing this hearing to our next regular meeting, Wednesday, June 18th at 5:30. Wednesday, June 18th at 5:30, we'll discuss that later. Okay, excellent, thank you guys all so much for such good attention to that topic. So on we move to the departmental reports. Melissa had an excellent report, would you like to, does anybody have any questions? And is there any updates you would like to add?
Um, let's see, I, yeah, most of the things are here. The, that which Counselor Pogwiz does signing, there's six places to sign on there, once again, it's that rogue banking situation, so if you, I know you, you have done it before, there was, there were issues with the one before, so anyway, we are now taking care of that, but you don't have to do it at this moment, just by the time it's the end, I don't want you to be split apart, but, anyway. Yeah, we've had, lots of things are rolling through the, the office and just trying to, as I keep saying, keep one nostril above the water line most of the time is really our goal, but we're starting to ramp up because we have summer and more people coming through, and so there's just a lot of little things, you know, but I think we are trying to do things well and continue on. I do have one announcement to make, to celebrate, that tomorrow is our Recorder Harrison's birthday, so tomorrow is his birthday, and so just wanted to bring that to everyone's attention, Joseph's been doing a really great job, and so he won't be here tomorrow because he's taking his birdie off, so that's good. Happy birthday.
Happy birthday, Joseph.
Happy birthday. Thank you.
So if someone has questions, feel free, but otherwise, all right there.
The departmental report, not about my birthday.
Yeah, departmental report, not his birthday.
Okay, and the next is the mayor's report, and I put in pretty much everything also, and I'll just add to what Melissa said, I know everybody is working really hard right now, because there are so many things going on, we've got a lot of grant proposals, we've still got grant proposals in the hopper, and we're, we're moving through implementation of some of them, which has a lot of work, and, and I know all of our staff is working pretty hard, so.
Could I bring one thing up? That I went ahead and put these both-year reports on Facebook, figuring that it's public information, and all the comments were all very positive, and it was obvious that nobody reads the packet.
Really?
So it, it really, I feel like it's a really positive thing to do each month, you've already done the work, and, and I did use Mayor Ann's photograph, and I used the Port Orford logo, but if, I thought if we got a picture of you in the office, that that would be a real cool thing, every month, people would see that picture and know what it is, so.
Yeah, people are very appreciative, very supportive.
Well, great, and I really appreciate that thought, Gary, because it has certainly been on, I know, our agenda for a long time to figure out a better communication plan, and ideally to have more in the city Facebook, or have, I've tried to.
And even the same thing in the paper, you know, you've already done it.
Yeah, and I've been trying to work on press releases in the paper and stuff, but with so much going on.
Which would be great, but I think you've summed everything up for us, and it sums it all up for the community.
It's a great idea, and it helps, it's an efficient way, I was just going to say, it's been hard to get to that, really thinking it through, so I appreciate your.
And possibly even a flyer that could go on to bulletin boards, I mean, you know, to think of every way we can get that information out, because people just don't realize how much of an emergency we're in, and, you know, all of a sudden, it's going to be a shock to people when something blows up, which is real possible.
You mean with water, not actually with.
Whatever, I mean, there's, you know, there's just lots going on.
Yeah.
And to make them aware of that, I think.
Yeah.
So I just wanted to make sure that.
Really appreciate that, thank you, Gary.
I have a question, Amy, so in your report, you alluded to the, the raw water tank that they're preparing to do that and all this kind of stuff, so will that affect the curtailment? Because we'll have some.
The raw water tank or the dredging reservoir, what are you talking about?
The raw water, the raw water tank.
That right now is kind of on hold.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's one piece of the puzzle, for sure, the dredging is the first piece.
Right, okay.
But we're getting closer.
Well, we got the grant for the wa, the wa, raw water story.
We got the first part of the grant to do the engineering for that.
Okay.
And then we have to go back once the first part is done to get the second part, supposedly we're all lined up in the lane.
Right.
Yeah.
Who knows if that is going to change, but we'll see. And then we did get that, because that is a federal grant.
That's a federal grant, too.
And then we did definitely get a grant and partial, and part grant, part loan to dredge the reservoir this summer, if we can pull all the pieces off, which it sounds like we can't, hopefully, we'll see.
Yeah.
But we are working with engineering, we're working with Public Works, we're trying to work together to, so, because it's a multi-pronged problem, and so we are trying to like hit all of these different places, and so we're all leveraging our knowledge and trying to do as much as we can to not have us in curtailment anymore, we, we want to make sure that we have the water to the people.
Basically, there's sort of the forward perspective look, which is, we've got a long list of things to do, like, you know, critical task backup and looking ahead to find grant funding to do the planning for those projects, because you can't just get, you kind of can't ask for a lot of money unless you have your ducks in a row and like have shovel-ready projects, so you kind of have to do all that stuff. And then we've got like, the actual everyday disasters that John is working with all the time, that have to be solved, and then we have sort of the in-between stuff, which is once we get some of these grants, like this dredging permit, we're going to have to figure out, what are we going to do for backup water? So now we got to like, figure all that out, and, so there's just so many different pieces to the puzzles.
Does it have to be replaced this year?
Oh, yeah, yes, it, it does.
It's going to be removed.
How long is it?
Fifty feet, I don't remember the.
At least forty, probably.
Is that something, if you guys rented an excavator, that you guys could do, Public Works could do?
I don't know, I've never got down all the way to the site, but it sounds like it's in a pretty gnarly.
It, it's, it's, we've been told, because it's in, I mean, it's in a stream, it's doing work in the stream, we've got the, we've got the engineering done on it, and so what we're doing with that is we're working with Aaron, who's just an awesome helper, to find funding to do it. If we can't find funding to do it, we're going to have to go to Plan B, seat of your pants, and figure out what to do, but we're going to try to implement, we got to try to do that this year.
We had a big, beautiful grant going on all of that, with all the engineering and all the things, but then, now, since these last heavy, heavy rains, right at the end of the winter, it actually collapsed further, and is now, the word she used was, it is now an emergency, and it needs, something needs to be done this summer for it, and so we are kind of shifting gears from, we're trying not to let perfect get in the way of good at this point, whereas before, we were really trying to make sure we were doing it properly and, and all that, with the engineering and, you know, really doing it.
Because that's.
It's a removal.
That's.
It's not a, we're not replacing it, it's removal, which has been the goal the whole time, but now we're more at a critical spot with that, and remember, that's trying to keep the sediments from going into our reservoir, which then would kind of devalue trying to do the dredging, if you then have a bunch of sediments.
Actually, it would be ideal if we can do both at the summer, because then we get, take that out, and we just have to make sure, the reason it's an engineered project is because it's in the stream bed, and also however, the end has to be contoured such that it's not going to become a long-term sediment source.
Something to.
So, but, she's got a very, a number of good ideas for us, and we'll return in those stones.
That's why I asked.
Very, very true. Okay, moving on, any other questions on those two reports? And then I think it looks like we have finance next, and we'll just, I think, say that we've got this budget committee meeting next week, and I do want to, I did want to ask you guys, we have, are anticipating some huge budget issues and questions, as we know, we've talked about, and we have the first budget committee meeting coming up next Thursday. I wanted to know if, if council, I don't even know if we can pull this off, but we talked about having, having another meeting before the budget committee meeting of just council to discuss some of the larger strategies, or do we want to just go into it with the budget committee and work on some of the big questions in the budget committee?
Looking at the applications, it seems like we've got some pretty interesting people that could have good input, maybe.
I'm talking about the, the budget committee meeting?
Yeah, I'm talking about the budget applications.
Oh, oh, yeah, yes, yes, right, okay, sorry, sorry, I was thinking, okay, yeah.
Because some of them.
Are CPAs and stuff.
Yeah, could just maybe, because it could be more different input.
Yep.
Than just ourselves.
Okay, well, I just wanted, I wanted to raise that question to ask you guys, if you felt comfortable going into it that way, or if there was any further discussion you wanted to have to give any direction. What I'm hoping we're going to do is have some scenarios to look at, and one of the things that's been, we've been limited by, is that our finance consultant has been away, and she's coming back next week, so hopefully she'll be able to generate information that will be super informative and helpful to us.
Should we meet an hour before that meeting with the council, so we can, you know, get the gist of it? You know, because I don't know if you've had a chance to even speak with Ann, have you, I know we had that one.
No, Ann Heath has been.
Okay, so, I know that one question we were asking, and that we need to.
So almost like a finance committee meeting ahead of time, and then have it roll into budget?
Council meeting before, either way, because the whole council's going to be at, then the whole council goes into budget session.
Do you think one hour is long enough? I'm going to tell you, I don't know that one hour is long enough for that.
Well, we limit our budget meetings to two hours, so if you throw in an additional meeting, that's three hours, so, I don't know, if you want to, if you don't think you can do it an hour.
I mean, I don't, I'm not the one that has to make the decisions, and this council has shown that they like to talk about.
Yeah.
Scenarios and options, and so, but we do have budget meetings listed, so one is on the 22nd, the next will be on the 29th, we then move into June, it has to be done by the end of June, so that's all I was saying, is that. And the reason, I mean, the reason I brought it up is because we, you know, those of us who've been on the finance committee, we've talked about this, and we have to get our ducks in a row, because we do need to start communicating about some of these options and scenarios to the community, and so, you know, that could be a budget committee discussion, but it could also be a council discussion, some of those elements, and so maybe.
I like the hour before.
I like, I would rather do it before the meeting personally, than, you know.
Another day.
Kind of go right into it, and.
We'd have our ideas kind of in a way, and then we'd have the additional input from the, without having to do it all.
Okay, so let's, we'll add that, if everybody likes that idea of doing that.
It'd be at four o'clock.
Four PM, yeah.
If you don't think an hour's enough.
I think three hours is probably going to be.
Right.
I'm going to be.
Yes, ma'am.
Seven thirty.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we find ourselves at seven thirty here, and so I would entertain a motion to.
I move to extend the meeting.
Oh, thank you. I feel honored.
I'll second it.
Okay, we've got a first and second, does anybody need to take a break at this time, or can we just keep going?
We're, we're.
Okay, let me take the vote first, Gary. Counselor Burns. Counselor Burns.
Yes.
Counselor Brennan.
Yes.
Counselor Pogwiz.
Yes.
Counselor Lovendahl.
Yes.
Counselor Rass.
Yes.
Counselor Webb.
Webb, yes, thank you.
Okay, let's just take a few minutes in case anybody needs to take a bathroom break, so we'll be back in five.
So did we decide at four, or should we, okay?
Four seems fine.
That's three hours.
Break at.
We are now unmuted.
We are, okay, we're coming back from our break, our, at seven thirty-nine, and we are in the middle of departmental reports, thank you, and next we have Public Works, except John is not here, so, I don't know if he, he left permanently, if he'll be back? Okay.
Still here.
Okay, John, you're, you're up.
Well, tons of things in the fire, as you can see, big one was, we got the controls installed for Hubbard's pump station, and we got another pump ordered up that should be in here in the next week or so, so we should be back to one and a half pumps.
Excuse me, where did you say that was? I didn't quite hear.
Hubbard's.
Oh, okay, oh, okay, gee whiz.
Those, those controls have been defunct for about a year now, so finally got those done, we don't have a lot of money left in the budget, so we had lots of failures Monday this week, three different pumps, so that's for next month. Osgood Hill is still pending our budget, we'll see what happens with that one, I'm not hopeful at this point. Coast Guard generator's been down for about a year due to a water pump radiator and multiple issues with the loads. So they're scheduled to come in on, well, they were the 19th, they changed it to the 20th now. So we may actually have that one resurrected for the time being, which is pretty big because the cost was about 50 grand to replace it.
John, what, how, what's the capacity of that? Does it say that?
Either 50 or 100K, I can't remember which.
We've really been seeing nice used generators online, cheap.
Me too. Yeah, and I've been searching those too. If we have the money in the budget, we got to get one, that thing is just rusted, completely rusted out.
It's kind of risky to buy some used, but what I've seen is just these gen packs with, with like zero hours on.
Yeah.
They're just, it's good stuff.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. And it's a huge cost saving for us too. So I'm not against buying used at all. Wyoming lift station is probably the big one, it's really given us a lot of grief. We're resetting motor controllers about every 10, 12 hours. We did the breakers in it, trouble shot with tag and ordered new motor starters and overloads are burned up and not replaceable. So we're replacing them with a new set, they're going to be a little bit bigger to carry to load for when we do pumps and we won't have to replace them a third time, they should be lifetime for this one, for that lift, for that lift station as it lives. It's the main, one of the main, Idaho's another main lift station. So it sees all the north into town, Idaho sees the south, then north into town, Wyoming sees the south into town. Everything pumps to those two stations, then it comes to the plant through those two stations. So Wyoming's a big one, it's got way too much flow for the size of the station. Way too much flow.
Wyoming?
Yeah, it's, it really needs to be upgraded, but I don't see it next budget year.
So you're saying more is being asked to pump more than?
Yes, it was designed for about half the amount of flow it's got. So we're working with Smith and Lovell's right now to see if we can't trim the impellers up to pick another 50, 75 gallons up. There's about an inch and a half of room left on impeller size. So don't think we'll have to change motors, we don't know.
So John, the question is if we have to, if we're continuing to add services onto that line, is it a problem?
Could be. Let's get the control issue worked out, the flow issue's been an issue since I've been here, but it's definitely getting to be more of an issue. So that into town for some reason sees about 50 times amount more rags, which causes clogs in the pumps and we're pulling them every week and deragging and putting them back in. So the flushables are killing us at those stations.
So flushable wipes are not flushable, is that what you're saying?
Not flushable.
Which of those, which of those, which of the, if you could like worst to best, like, you know, the top three?
Of the lift stations out of all nine?
Oh shit, stuff.
It's the worst for rags and grease and Idaho's the second for rags and grease.
Wyoming and then Idaho?
Uh huh.
Okay, thank you.
Should we be doing a little bit more public education on that again?
Yeah, and it should go out monthly probably if there's room in the, in the bill, just as a reminder. Cause not only that, it's creating lots of problems at the plant too. Cause rags don't, they don't chop, they don't shred, they turn into a rope is what they do. And they're almost uncuttable with just about every tool we've tried.
Oh, my gosh.
Really just got to kind of solves all through them and yeah, they're, they're a real weird thing when they ball together like that. It's crazy, it's crazy. But I've got pictures, I brought them to council before, I mean, five gallon bucket full of rags out of one pump.
Economic, John, you think it's an economic issue like people that are unable to afford?
I don't know, toilet paper's a whole lot cheaper than.
Well, paper towels, I mean, but toilet paper, I mean, a guy might have some rags around and not have toilet paper, you know, I'm just wondering.
Yeah.
I'm wondering if.
I think it's convenience of wet wipes is what I think.
So you're not talking about, to clarify, you're not talking about actual rag rags, you're talking about flushable wipes that are not flushable? It's a misnomer, they're terrible.
Hundred percent.
Thank you, they're not rags.
I think I city manager could write a letter to, to retail stores that sell them, market them as flushable. And I think that there is some culpability there.
You could sue them.
And maybe you ask them to.
Remove those from the shelves?
It's not helping us.
Well, those people should put those wipes into the garbage can instead of.
People don't care and they don't know and they're just, and I don't mean those people, you know, maybe I do it. You know, I don't, but maybe she does.
I don't.
It says it makes you a bad person, you know.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But it says flushable.
It does, and that's, that's what I mean.
That's my point, is they are marketing something that's damaging our infrastructure. And I think that there's some culpability there and maybe a letter to them making them aware might help, I don't know. It couldn't hurt, I wouldn't think.
To get it at the source.
Just to, to the manager of this and that and say, we've got a problem going on here. And we know that it's probably these people, we, as a joke, but the guy that's buying these isn't driving to Walmart probably and making a big shopping trip to Costco.
But it could be having a baby and could be.
I think that probably the lower income sized things people end up shopping you, you know, they don't, you know, you're going on Costco and going to.
I don't know, I don't know if it's a lower income thing, it just might be some people use those. But I, I was just wondering, why would you, why not write a letter in the water bill that just says, hey, or with a photo of these things?
We have done that.
Yeah, I can do, I don't remember seeing it.
Something next, they can put a little sign up next to the display.
They come in makeup, I mean, they're, they're makeup wipes nowadays, they've got hand wipes, mechanics.
Really dumb, honestly.
I mean, yeah, and some of them say flushable and some of them say not flushable.
So what, I, you know, that maybe they would voluntarily put little stickers on the, those things that's not flush. Or maybe, you know, maybe it's faster to have one of our guys put stickers on things for four hours a week than to try and cut these logs out of this.
They're terrible, that's terrible, you cannot pull those things apart.
See what I'm saying, I mean, maybe there's, maybe there's a smarter way to.
It's a national.
It's a national issue.
National problem, they've been fighting for years.
Well, maybe we should, you know, suggest this as legislation to our. Well, the thing I think is, the point is to make it clear that it is causing costly and taxing issues to our water infrastructure.
I just think it's more effective probably to reach out to our consumers, our residents continually, rather than just put a sign on the.
Well, not just, but.
Or in addition, but I think we probably could use some more communication, education.
I put it on.
And what we notice is a lot of folks, even if we have things on the back of the water bill, folks don't oftentimes read that. And so, and that's, that's where we've put it before and so we can continue to do that. But I'm, we call it frugal in my house, not cheap, because it sounds nicer to say I'm frugal, but I don't even want to print the bills in color. Right, so I don't even want to highlight the stuff on the back as I'm frugal.
So, and I know that doesn't work for you necessarily, but there you go. What if, you know, you buy a pack of cigarettes, it goes beep, and the lady says, oh. What if you could code those?
I'm just saying.
And beep, and the lady said, you know that these aren't flushables? That these damage the infrastructure, that's all we have to say, every single one, I mean, they do it for cigarettes, they do it for beer, they do it for.
They put up signs at the cash registers too.
Gosh, that's a really interesting idea, John. You could do that.
I know, I think that that's.
That would be a good, that would.
I'm just saying.
Or what he said is a tax.
That's like, that's like banning beer because somebody's drunk driving, you know what I mean? You like beer, I like beer, this guy likes beer, I mean, we're not drunk drivers, you know what I mean? So you just, she might drink too much and drive, but.
No.
I don't know who does.
Okay, well, I think these are interesting ideas, but we got to like keep moving. But I like the conversation and maybe we.
My job, Brett Webb, you need to fall silent.
Think about these things and Sean, I think the, the sentiment is definitely keep us posted on these issues and people want to know because we want to be proactive and as you know, we've been working proactive on the water side. But we are going to be trying to work proactive with that waste water, water recycling money and, and just any things that we need to do proactively here, let's.
Yep, absolutely.
Anything else you want to highlight in your report?
I'll make one other comment that I was going to save for May, but I'll say it now because you mentioned it a few times. Me and Tina did have a conversation with OHA for the dredging and. So we did have, I did have a conversation with OHA, we were going to have a Zoom meeting and Tina was on board, but then we canceled it at last minute because we didn't have all the answers.
Okay.
But we did discuss switching over to Garrison Lake, it is our emergency water source, we do have water rates. So there's a few things we're going to have to do to make sure that we can meet, if we can meet the safe drinking standard that we have now with the same water source, then we can send it through the plant without the fancy filter system. But we didn't talk about snails yet, so that's the one thing that we were missing. We need to have the filter for the snails, we don't want them in the plant.
Yeah.
The parameters are pretty much going to be the same, the, our set pH and our set chlorine levels will be the same. So the next step is do, we need to pull samples on Hubbard's so we can compare total dissolved solids and see how they compare to Garrison Lake. One thing I did notice in those sample results was Garrison Lake is about two and a half times warmer than the reservoir pot, which really surprised me. So that could complicate treatment issues. It's harder to treat warmer water than it is colder water. But I think what we'll do is Kent had downs from, OHA had a pretty good idea. We'll probably get some samples from Garrison Lake and try to make it flock and make sure that it's something we can deal with. So we'll, we'll have another meeting once we have all the questions answered.
Great.
But it doesn't sound like it's, it's not possible and they're going to work with us to get it done so we can meet our timeline this fall. It's just, we got to jump through a bunch of hoops, so I'll keep you posted with that.
Please do, and if we need to go get out for water samples in the reservoir, remember I have a canoe and we have those old water things that we used last time, I mean, we have the tools.
So I think basically we'll run the same samples we did at Garrison at Hubbard's, hasn't been done in a long time in my knowledge. So it'd be nice to make sure the soluble solids are the same because that's what we're going to be worried about. So that's really about the only real update. And one other quick tidbit, the community setters being somewhat of a super pain in the butt. The organization skills of the three different contractors are not helpful at all and they're doing things not the way most people would. So we had to move a water line that we didn't anticipate out of their way temporarily onto the sidewalk because Battle Rock was tied into the same line that Community and Legion Hall was tied.
Battle Rock Coffee.
Yes, Battle Rock Coffee, sorry, it was tied into the same service line, so it complicated, it's complicating the project. We had to shut them off today and we're hoping to get them back on in the morning. But after they just called me when they got it back up, it blew another chunk out somewhere between Tichner, where we made our connection and Battle Rock Coffee. So we have a little bit more work there to get Tim back up and running.
Is that like that connection of that place, was that unexpected or is that a old connection?
To have Battle Rock connected to the American Legion Hall, yes, absolutely.
So was that a recent thing, like when that went in? Or was that like an old thing when that old house was there prior to Battle Rock?
It, the service to Battle Rock is new, so when they did that.
There was a house.
When the house left, when they put in the new line and meter, they connected it to the old two inch, well, inch and a quarter galvanized. And it was failing rapidly, it was leaking when we dug it up. So we did find another leak, which is good. And now we're just, the problem is, is I wanted to move it out into the road and I can't because they didn't pull the curb in the gutter. They wanted to leave the sidewalk and gutter for last, well, the water line needs to go there. So I can't, I'm not going to go dig up the asphalt and remove all the sidewalks and curbs for them because that's in their contract. So once they get all that out, we can go back and swing it out into the road, get around the project site. They're just going to have to work around it, there's no other way around it, otherwise Battle Rock will not have water. And there's nowhere else that I can get water to them because on the other side on 10th Street is a one inch line servicing the bank and two homes, which is too much on that one inch, so that has to come from Washington Street.
Okay, well, thank you for dealing with that, John. And I think that if there are those kinds of things that are intractable, we can work with our architect, HGE to, there's sort of like a, you know, as you know, like chain of command of, we talk to the architect, they talk to the contractor as opposed, so.
So they get angry from the contractor, he wasn't happy that he couldn't finish his job and I told him he'd have to come back in a day or two while we got the work around done. So if you get angry from him, it, it wasn't expected, it was supposed to be in the road, it wasn't in the road. And they should have done the demo on the sidewalk and curb is what I said, why don't you demo that while, before I moved the line then one and done. But nope, that's some other contractor, so whatever, yeah. So that's where we're at with that, we're doing everything we can, but they're kind of needy right at this point. So they're going to have to work at our pace because we have so many other things in the fire right now.
Water is pretty important for coffee.
Okay.
Yeah, it's really important for coffee, that's what Gary said, he was not happy with it, so.
I, I had one thing.
Yeah.
I hadn't really thought about it, but I had discussions with Carol Lottin about the fire department and hydrants. And I was wondering if there's any plan on bringing the fire hydrants that are down.
Yes.
Back up.
There is, still trying to manage to find the parts for the one on the corner here, we found most of them, we're still looking for one piece. So once a manufacturer finds it for me, then we'll, I told David Dent not too long ago, I sent him an email saying that we plan to get this one rebuilt this summer and then the one on 14th is going to be an outage for several blocks because there's no, there's no way to isolate it because it's directly off the main and it blew the tee apart. So we had to splice around it to get the services back on at that time, that one's a little more complicated, but can be done and will be done.
Are we, so in the past there was an issue regarding who was responsible to test the hydrants? And is there, are you finding any conflict with that? Are you testing or is the fire department testing?
We did, we try to do the annual maintenance, but there's no way. This has been a little bit of conflict with our regulator too, because we don't, we don't flow them every year, flush them every year because we never have enough water to flush them, right? I mean, if I flushed hydrants, I'd be up all night for three days trying to remake that water. So we flush them per break, right, or repair when we have to. The annual testing, Dave, the firehouse does flow testing every three years or every five years. And then they design that chart for us that shows us where we have low flow and high flow and, you know, all of that, but.
As far as that goes, everything's going well.
It is, yeah, they're, they're a lot more cautious about shutting them down, that's when they blow them apart, it's when you shut them down too fast. So.
Water hammer.
There had been some discussion about who was the authority? Who was the owner of those fire hydrants in the past? And it got down to there was one that didn't work and there was a fire and it was saying this and this was saying that. And I don't know, maybe eight years ago, there was a fire hydrant painting contest, you remember that? You know, they did that when I was a kid.
Really should be one color.
So, so, well, they, all that aside, but the permission, the request went to the fire chief. And, and that was, you know, with the paint, is this an okay one to paint? And, and so the, I guess the collaboration or the, it sounds like that's going well.
It is, we have to take ownership on them, I don't want to, I'd love to give ownership to the firehouse, that'd be great, but I can't because they're, they're part of the distribution system, so legally we're responsible.
They're in our right of ways.
Yeah, they're ours.
Yeah, they could do the maintenance, where I came from, firehouse did all the flow testing, all the flushing. And then if there was a maintenance repair, we would handle the repair, but they did everything else.
I see.
So, but if we did that, they would flush this AWA standards or the fire standard and then we really would have a quarter.
Hey, you guys, I, I'm sorry to interrupt, but you know, it's eight o'clock and we got all sorts of business to do. So maybe what we need to do is just keep this moving on, it's, it's an interesting discussion and I really appreciate the opportunity to learn these things, but just to keep it moving on.
Sure, I'm ready.
I think we got to.
Everybody's got no questions for.
To do it, if we're done with, I mean, not to interrupt, but just we got to do, we got to keep it going. So thanks, John, for that, yes, I think we're set. Thank you.
See you later, John.
Anything from planning, Joseph?
All of y'all have been looking at the DLCD grant update, so we're still working.
All of y'all have been looking at the DLCD grant update. So we're still working on getting that finished up. We did some training with our, the new counselor for the new commissioner that all of y'all elected this evening, or appointed this evening, I should say. She was present at the previous meeting. So we did some training with her and our other new planning commissioner. And the big thing is that we are now talking about the FEMA pick 'em and sort of what we're thinking about doing because that's coming up where we have to get something in our code. Based on what we're seeing from FEMA, it basically looks like what we're gonna do is just, in our code, refer to the FEMA, the FEMA document, just because we still haven't seen anything super concrete from them. And both personnel are thinking and we aren't getting super great answers right now.
It'll change.
And it'll change, basically.
It's good to go with what they're doing.
Yeah.
Rather than try and go with our own.
Yeah.
Keep up, yeah.
It, it would just be easier to say, see the current FEMA code than to try and keep continuously updating what we're doing.
Yep. Sounds like, yeah, and following up on our last discussion, that sounds good. So you'll keep us surprised of that.
Yep. Just don't be surprised when you see that in the next couple of months.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay. I, I'd like to maybe move quickly through liaison reports. If anybody has anything that's a burning thing to share, why don't we do it? And if not, Sarah, do you have some parks things? Because I think I, there's things going on.
Yeah, we do have a couple of things. We do have the planning grant. We hope to push the button tomorrow. It was supposed to be today, but the state had some IT problems. So we're winding up with that. We're working with Public Works on some concerns about the bathroom in the park. And thank you for agreeing to have Ladeen Ricky. She'll be a great addition to our team.
Are there issues?
Also, we're working on the A-frame release. Yes.
Park Host?
The Park Host.
We're working on that.
Mm-hmm.
And, and the planning or the Parks Commission is over the Park Host?
No, Melissa. No, no, no. John, John is. But so I worked through Melissa to work through John to, so we're working on that.
It seems like there's issues with the Park Host.
Yes.
So I think those, there's been specific things to the cleanliness of the bathrooms out there. I went out, met again with John today. I went and looked at them. There are issues with cleanliness in the bathroom. But I think the key is the, and I don't know at the last Parks meeting if that, I believe it was talked about extensively, but I don't know if it was specific to the position or just exactly what, but.
Yeah, it was, they, they, yes, it was to the position.
Okay.
But it had more from the condition of the bathroom. You know, I went and looked at it as well, but I think we'll work through it and we'll get a resolution to that. That's it.
Thank you very much. Any quick and dirty from emergency prep, Gary? I'm sort of having the ear to the historic preservation thing. So I'll just mention that we did get a letter that the jail has been designated as a national historic landmark. Our little Port Orford jail.
And can we start using it?
How about we charge the county and solve both problems at once? Okay. Brett, quick and dirty on port?
New cranes are here. They came, arrived from Italy. The tariffs are gonna look like we had to go find another million dollars because of the tariffs.
No way. Didn't they get here in time?
And they got dumped. They pulled them back down. So anyway, things are going good there. Kind of, there's, there's some contention on the board near election time. And, you know, there's just, you know, vote for Brett.
So May 20th, you get your ballots.
There's a plan for installing?
Yeah, yeah, no, it's got it. It was the installation we had to come up with. When, when we originally started on this and got our first bid for the installation, it was 700, it's either six or $700,000 and now it's like 1.8 million. So now it's just a matter of maybe, I want to say less than a year, but maybe it was a year.
This is like what, you know, what we just have experienced here with the community building. It's just, it's hard. Okay. Thank you. Watershed stuff, I kinda included with the mayor's report and we had the fire report written and talked a little bit about that. So if there's no other pressing things, let's move on to old business. And as we discussed earlier, I would entertain a motion to, what's the word I want to say here? To continue both of these issues, both of these matters to the next meeting. OR, ordinance 2501 and ordinance 2502 to continue both of those items to the next meeting.
So moves.
Okay. I'm gonna call for the vote. Counselor Brennan?
Yes.
Counselor Burns?
Yes.
Counselor Pogwizd?
Tim, yes.
Counselor Lovendal?
Yes.
Counselor Rask?
Yes.
Counselor Webb?
Webb, yes.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you. So now we get on to this new business issue, which is the matter of the TLT, increasing the transient lodging tax rate to, from 7% to 10%.
I move to adopt ordinance 2025-03, increasing TLT tax rate imposed from 7% to 10%.
Second.
Who was the second?
What's the matter?
We were tied. Okay, Tim. Okay. Any further discussion on this?
I had a question.
There's two parts to this. We're doing the first one first, which is the increase. Yes.
But I have two copies of it. I got.
Okay, so we.
It was one in my book and I got another one.
Can I?
The same?
Do you want to explain or?
They're not the same.
So between the time the package came out and today, our legal counsel reviewed it. So the additional one you have that isn't bound into your binder, but is, you know, included in the pocket at the front, that's the one that's been reviewed by the counsel, by our legal counsel.
And she made recommendations. And so we just put them in so that we're considering the one that she reviewed.
No significant changes?
Oh, mine's lined out here.
Well, the, the lines are from what we have.
Yeah, yeah.
Past to what's there now. It was not really significant, just a few little, like, get rid of things that she felt like, like less is more was sort of the.
Right.
Most of it. She did underscore that we have to be extremely careful about how we spend this money. And I did specifically ask, we're getting into the next one, but I did specifically ask your question. So let's just keep it on the first ordinance first, which is pretty straightforward. And then we can discuss some of the details in the second one. So any other questions about the raising of the rate? Just to give a little background, remember that the finance committee identified this. Council gave direction. And so this is implementing, this has been in discussion since before to, and we, and there's just those two minor changes. Okay. Any further discussion? Nope. So let's call for the vote. Counselor Lovendal?
Yes.
Counselor Brennan?
Yes.
Counselor Burns?
Yes.
Counselor Rask?
Yes.
Counselor Webb?
Webb, yes.
Counselor Pogwizd?
Tim, yes.
Okay. So now we're going to be moving on to the next one. And so in addition to raising the rate, which is just for people who are watching at home, if anybody's there, we are in really needing revenue. And this is one of the few things that we can easily do. And so that's why we're taking this action. Our finance, financial consultant, Anne Heath, also recommended to us, you guys really need to clean up your code because there's, it's kind of complicated. And I, I'm gonna just pass out this little thing, if you would, to people. Maybe you can take that side. And I'll take this side. We're here.
Do we have a copy of this?
Of what?
Yeah. Of the, the next.
10B.
Right after the.
10B?
The one is just a one page.
It's right there.
Okay.
So.
For reconciliation or something?
I wanted to just explain that what we're, what we're doing is we have been collecting a 7% tax. And the way it works, and Tim is really the expert, but I'm just spent, like, I, I really dug into the legal aspects of this. So now I'm like gonna vie with you to be, we'll have to arm wrestle about who's the TLT expert. We worked on this.
This year.
We've worked on this closely, closely together. Let's put it that way. We have been charging 7%. At the time of an ordinance that, or at the time that a law was passed in 2003, the city already had in place a 6% TLT tax that is now considered grandfathered, that we can use for tourism or other things. That amount, the 6%, is grandfathered. When we added a 1% increase, whenever that was, I forget, any increase that's added after 20, 2003, has got to have more, has got to be either go, set on a 30, 70 split with at least 70% going towards tourism promotion and/or tourism-related facilities. A council decided at that point to add 1% and have 100% of that 1% go towards tourism promotion. So in my little diagram I sent to you, the top chart is that, the 6% and the 1%. And I just did it on like, if we got in, if we were taking in 100,000 of revenue, just to give you that. What we're doing now is we're going from, we're still gonna keep that 6% and then that.
General fund.
Is gonna go, we're gonna recommend it's gonna go to the general fund. And the 4% is going to have to be divided in a 30, 70 split. And 70% is going to, shall go by state statute to tourism promotion or tourism-related facilities. And the 30% can go to general fund and/or tourism. Okay? So that's, I just drew a little drawing because it's hard to keep track of all the numbers.
And our hands are tied on that. That's state law. There's no way to change that split ratio.
And.
We can do more like we did before, but obviously we're in a position where we need to do what we're doing. The reason why we did the full 1% in the years past is 1%, we didn't collect the kind of TLT monies we're collecting now because there was, there were no such thing as STRs. It was just from the motels and the RV parks that paid this. I mean, there was a few vacation rentals, but nothing like Thursday.
So the main changes in this, if I can find my little here, is that it's been, we're proposing to, what I just said, it, we used to be 1% for all, all for advertising. And now it's gonna be 70% of the 4%. It's gonna be for tourism promotion, so advertising, and also tourism-related facilities, which in our community is primarily the visitor center, could possibly be a few other things, but primarily the visitor center. We're also going to, we're proposing to have the money come into the general fund instead of the parks fund. And this was recommended by Anne Heath, who has tried to help us to reallocate the budget so that it's, so that all the staff positions are under the general fund and that it's. Everything except police because police are their own unit. Everything, yes. Thank you, Melissa. I'm, we're learning how to discuss this. And also because the general fund is the only fund from which we can put money out to all the other funds. And so she says that's really the best way to organize it. Whereas in the past, we've had to, like, we had some money in the parks fund that we were kind of trying to call a police parks, you know what I mean? We've kind of had to.
Be creative.
Be creative, yeah. So that's the second big thing. And then there's two other things to discuss. And we can go through this, but I just thought I'd highlight the big things, I think, that we need to discuss. The next thing is, we've identified in here, and you'll see the changes are primarily to clarify the language. Where we're getting rid of the red stuff, it, it's kind of gets added in a little bit lower, but like in a different order so that it's just like, this is what, it's just kind of make it read more easily. But the other big thing is regarding the TLT grant program, we have in here that the council may appropriate up to $15,000. That's gonna come not from the 70%, but from the 30%. And the question is, is that too much? Right now in the code, it's 11,000. And we, we, there's been a big question basically about where the fireworks money comes from. In the code that we have, it says it's 11,000. In the past couple of years, I think we've given 5,000 over and above the TLT money. This year, it's, it was, or was it supposed to come from the TLT money? It's, there's been confusion. And so this is what we have to sort out.
So what happened the last year was they wanted their own light item and they got it. But now we're at, the budget issues that we have now, we feel that there's just no way to do it. That's why it went back down to 11,000. It went back to what code said, 11,000.
And this year, what we did was we had, from that 11,000, 5,000 went to the fireworks and there were 6,000 for the grant program. That's what we just did because of, we had already basically given the money for the fireworks. So all we had left was 6,000. So the way that.
It's coming out of the general fund, basically.
Not yet. Yes, it kind of, the 30% is going to be in, and I don't, that, that 15,000 or the 5,000 for the fireworks, I don't exactly know where that's coming out of. So the other thing that's hard about this, and this is why the clarification needs to happen, and Dina Lang has been one who has worked with this because she's the one that every year, I know Tim comes in and Dina talk about it and like, well, was it 15 and then five and then, but what about the other? And it just is, it was really confusing. And so we just need to get some kind of hard and fast rules in here to say what, what is paid to the fireworks and all of that. The other thing that happens is they can't on July 3rd, order their fireworks, right? It has to be done early. And so that's where a lot of this confusion comes in, that it's always been, they've taken the $5,000 and that comes out in December or January to reserve those fireworks and to buy those fireworks. So then when it comes to actual firework time, then people, it's like, well, was that 5,000 from last fiscal year or was it this fiscal, is it calendar year or is it, I mean, it just gets really, really cumbersome. And then this is clarified. Well, but, but we're still not clarified on that. This ordinance, you know, is like the grants from TLT money start in July 1st. Fiscal year. Fiscal year. And so we have to get clear. And, you know, this was written here as may appropriate. And I mean, I kind of think there's a couple of different ways that we can do this. One is that we can come up with what we want to do. The other thing is maybe it is a budget thing that comes up every year because it may be, there's gonna be a couple of years that are gonna be like rice and beans years, you know, and that might be a little bit different than what we would like. But, and, you know, we don't yet have the full, you know, sense of what that is until we get to the budget committee and we're looking. And the finance committee has been really squeezing every rutabaga and trying to find 5,000 here and 2,000 there and everything. So.
5,000 for fireworks seems very extravagant for what we've got to work with.
It could be. We already did it last year. So it's just, we need to kind of.
Saying it's extravagant.
Yeah. Right. Yeah.
But on the other hand, $5,000 really doesn't buy much fireworks anymore. It's, they've gone, they've probably tripled, tripled or quadrupled in the last five years.
And I think the question becomes, I mean, what's, what's the biggest thing that we do in the city of Port Orford? Like what brings the tourists and when do they come? Well, they come July 4th and that's one of the major things. And so that also is part of that tourism piece. So that, these are the, these are the parts where it really rubs because it is a major draw to this community and the businesses and things to have all those folks come in. But again, we just need the clarification. So you folks can decide what to do. We just need the clarification of, of what are we, what are we allocating and when?
I think ideally it would be good to get back to the, to the, so if you look at F on the document, if we could get back to the 15,000, but then you would give five to the Jubilee and then 10 to the other grant people if we can afford to do that. But I like the way Anne put this in there. The city council may, knowing that for the next two, three years, we're gonna be tight. So we may not be able to do 15. If we only can do the 10 or 11, that's what we end up doing. And we end up giving the Jubilee five and six to the other group of people that, I don't, I'm not saying that's fair. Don't get me wrong. I, I just don't
Why can't that come out of the 70?
Well, this is a question I was, thank you for bringing that up, Wiz. And I did send a letter to our attorney trying to get clarity on. So the amount, what, what can be spent by the 70% is called marketing. And there's just, there's some gray area as to what that means. And so marketing for an event, does that mean putting on the event? Does that mean doing the planning? Does it mean buying the supplies? We might be able to get away with that, but we might really need to, basically she, she said be very cautious about how you spend this money.
If we can, if we advertise that as a city, if we took on the advertising of that event, we quite possibly could pull that off. It's a gray area, but I feel like it's a tour, it's a tourist promotion event.
Yeah.
And I'd feel a lot better
It was coming out of that money.
Well, I agree with you because
Have it for the, in the 30%.
Because 40K is an awful lot of money, you know?
Oh, yeah. It could be a lot of money that, that that group's going to get. Which brings me to the fourth thing, which is not in here, but is in the LOC model code, which I didn't quite figure out until we started having this conversation with Lori, which is that what they recommend is that basically you need an agreement with your third-party group that's doing the money. Because here we are going to, this code says, well, you just pass, put that, give that other group $40,000. And it's kind of like, where's the accountability for that? Unfortunately, we have a responsible person now. But that person may or may not know how sensitive some of these definitions are. And we're on the hook, literally, in fact, it sounds like from what Lori said, individual counselors could be on the hook if we misappropriate these funds. And so
This is Main Street.
And the group is Main Street, yes. So to clarify that, that's
Specifically talking about the current Main Street or the last Main Street, but it could become a Main Street in the future that says, hey, we're going to buy my tithes for everybody or something.
Well, yeah.
That's what we're doing, trying to protect ourselves.
So, so there is like a model agreement that you enter, you could enter into with that organization. And in that organization, I mean, in that agreement, it pretty much says, you know, the organization agrees or understands that the money has to be spent for X, Y, and Z. And so if we could get a legal opinion that fireworks is an okay thing or that as part of this promotion
They would donate it from the
Then it could go from the other fund. But those are things that are still like, I think, a little bit in the process of being worked out. And I don't know if our lawyer would give the okay on that because this is so contentious.
Very contentious.
I, last week I mentioned in my mayor's report that I testified in the hearing about cities in Oregon are trying to get greater flexibility to spend this money. And it was quite the earful to under, to see what the other side was saying. And it was a huge, I mean, all the cities, law enforcement, I mean, all, everybody who's in the city was and counties were asking for flexibility.
Is that?
But But the other side is the people who are in the promotion industry are saying, we have to keep investing in promotion and tourism because it's such a big driver in our economy of Oregon. And, you know, so you can see that point of view and then, but when you're in the situation we're in in terms of financial straits, you know, anyway.
City to promote.
Yes, exactly. Or, and you need to have law enforcement and water and sewers to do it.
And I, I will speak up at this point and it's, it has to do with E on page 17 of the new piece of the code. We had a citizen who was concerned about why would it have to be 100 miles? So why would, you know, could it be 50? And then, you know, has to be at least 60 days before the event, you know?
Could just be nothing there. Because if somebody comes from Langley, their money's as good as the person that comes from Salem.
Yeah, but the reason why you have the, you, you, you want to bring people
From afar.
From outside the community in, so they spend money at the restaurants and those kinds of things.
Saying that if they're coming from Bull Beach or Brookings or their money is just as good as the person from wherever.
Of course their money is, but so the group at the time just decided on, I think it was, I don't know how it got to 100, but I thought it was 50 miles, but it could have been 100 miles. They were just trying to get it out there. They thought 100 miles would get it out on the I-5 corridor perhaps. Things are completely different than they were when this code was made. Social media wasn't really a thing and you had to call the newspaper in Eugene and say, hey, we got an event. Those kinds of things. That's the way the group was thinking.
Well, I think we could, we could change that because I mean, I know, I did, I did go and meet with Susan at Main Street just to get her input on this. And she did say that, for example, they had a thing where they were going to try to put in a, some information at a kiosk at the North Bend Airport. But they couldn't because it says 100 miles and that's only 50 miles. So
It, so somehow it got changed from, from 200. I don't know how. Somewhere it used to be 50.
So why don't we, that was something brought forward.
I would think so, yeah. Because I think if you get it out 50 miles, that they made an effort to get it out there, to be honest with you. And then the rest of it gets covered. I know Kim Foster does a lot for Main Street and she gets them on Facebook. I mean, it goes out probably outside of, outside of the, you know, the state. So they're covered.
The other thing we could do is we could say, yeah. I was going to say we could put it in that other agreement. But if you, we didn't, we wouldn't have to do 50 miles if we want to trust their judgment. But the idea is to make sure nobody's just going to like throw a parlay for their buddy.
Yeah.
Right. So there is an ordinance directing, I believe we put Main Street on the document, but if not, it goes back to the Chamber of Commerce. There is an ordinance out there that, that they are our advertising agency.
It's in here. It's D. Yep.
Yes, there was probably tighter and to cover those, just so everybody understands, this isn't a Port Orford thing. This is a state-level thing. And if we misuse tax dollars, it's a big deal. Just like you mentioned, each counselor could get pulled up to Salem. And I don't really want to be.
So one of the questions, was this before the event? So shall promote it outside Port Orford at least 60 days and in areas 50 miles from Port Orford? It doesn't make sense if you don't take with the
You need to before the event.
The event. I mean, I don't, I don't know. That was something that someone else had, had brought up.
I think it was a typo that got, there was some problem with when transcribed description in this.
Okay, okay.
But that is a correct, I mean, you're correct. All grant applicants show at least 60 days before the event in an areas 50 mi, in an areas, at least 50 mi, or in areas 50 miles.
From Port Orford.
From Port Orford, yeah.
Okay, so we'll unstrike the before the event part and turn it to 50.
Yep, right, okay. Okay. Any other questions or concerns? And I mean, I guess what we're, what we're saying with, so the outstanding thing is that $15,000, do we want to just leave it as may appropriate for now and kick the can and have this discussion as part of the budget committee? Knowing that we are going to have to grapple with that fireworks question then? Or do we want to make it part of this discussion now? Do we want to make it part of this code?
The Jubilee Committee, I know they disbanded and they just went together really fast. But couldn't they start trying to get donations for the following year for their fireworks?
That was
And do, and, and
There was no Jubilee Committee was a problem and, and there could be the same.
Yeah, I get it. I was here at the time when they wanted to be on the budget. I was sitting out there to have a line item. And I'm not, I'm not sure we want that as a line item in our budget. And maybe because we're going to be in tight, you know, we might have to encourage
Should be no problem.
Yeah. Should encourage more outside, people getting donations to try to supplement the costs, especially in the next couple of years.
Where they get donations, I know the fire department goes around with the boot and
They did the car show in the past where there was money coming from the car show.
Yeah, there used to be
Ancillary type events that would
Yeah.
Fund the
They used to do the like, you know, test like down there at the fireworks, you'd pay 10 bucks to say, oh,
On the pokey pin.
Tell my sweetie Brett Webb that.
Oh, really? Oh, they didn't even talk on the thing?
I, I think they
It was on the radio too, wasn't it?
Oh. I guess I've never had a sweetie.
Get out. There were ways. So yes, the Jubilee Committee needs to help finance their
But there are always these three volunteers that at the last day of the thing, man, they're like, okay, we'll do it. You know what I mean?
They really don't know what they're up to.
Well, and the thing is we, you know, we're in a transition because we, for, for decades, we had like a very
Dedicated bunch.
Dedicated person and bunch who was doing it. And we're now, we still have a very dedicated bunch that's doing it, but they're kind of still, I think, figuring out the ropes and
Who is doing it? I can't remember.
Jen Bailey and
Katie.
Katie King and there's a woman named Diane Hoffman and
They have more of a committee.
Somebody had, I don't remember.
Marlene, Marlene Hoffman.
Marlene Hoffman, yeah. And a woman named Henigan, sorry, last name. Anyway, I, I think now that I'm remembering it, the thing to do is let's get the legal opinion about whether it can come from the 70%. I'm not 100%.
Jen Bailey has her hand raised.
Okay, oh, there she is. Great. And then we can go from there. Jen, I, are you on? Did you want to? We don't usually actually kind of take this kind of thing in the middle of a meeting, but since you're there and we're discussing this, if you would briefly say whatever you're going to say?
Thank you. I'm taking a lot of notes and we'll, we'll be getting back to you shortly. I just wanted to immediately clarify a couple of things, which is that the Jubilee never actually asked to have a line item. That was suggested by John Huddle, I think, back when he was temp city admin. And you guys have been very generous. Originally, the city council back in 2018, 2019, had committed $5,000 a year. And so that's going to be our basic ask and hopefully it can come out of the 70%. But, and I'll stop there. Thank you. And we'll be right back in touch with you with all the details. Trust me.
Okay, well, I think that's, that will be the hopeful thing, that that will work out for us. And, and as you know, Jen, we completely support and appreciate your effort. And it's just that some of us have the crystal ball of realizing we're going to be in real dire financial straits. So that's kind of what we're up against. And that will be, you know, as we discuss it with the budget committee, everybody will get to know that more. So
And I, and I should have started with that. I completely agree. I care way more about our water system than the fireworks. So don't even start me on all of that. So also I just wanted to point out that since you are under budget constraints, you're, what you're actually talking about right now is raising the current grant amount from 11 to 15. And so that seems a little bit contradictory.
Well, no, it, it is in code, but what we were doing is in practice, it had sounded like, from what Tim told me, that the past couple of years, we've actually been giving five to Jubilee and 10 to the grant. So that's what we've been doing in practice. And one of the things that actually we've been trying to do, I should have mentioned, I did go to the TLT committee and we had a really good conversation about trying to get our act together because there are some things in here that we were kind of, that are old, they're out, out of date. And trying to like make sure that what we're, we're doing, what we're saying we're doing and we're So that was one of those items is, you know, through this period and COVID and everything, we got a little cattywampus. And I think a good question to talk to you about too, Jen, is that timing matter of, you know, if you need the money early, then maybe the, we, we got some things to work out, so.
Yes, yes. Sorry, that was the other quick point I wanted to make. We already, we don't sign that contract with a fireworks provider unless we have the money in the bank. So we do have enough money at that time. We're, we're, at least me, I'm not personally comfortable with signing a contract when we don't have secured funds. But that doesn't mean that the next year isn't right around the corner. So we need, anyway, we need to clarify all of that. It's, all of this is very confusing. And that basically, in my opinion, the TLT grant accounting for the last, you know, for a couple of years there was incorrect. So okay, thank you so much for listening.
On that, so
We'll be following up.
Okay, any other? So if, so as it stands, we have in this that we may appropriate up to $15,000. That is generous. We could lower it. We could leave it as this for now and deal with it in the budget and figure out what's what. So
Regardless of whether it comes out of the 30 or 70, we could go ahead and pass this.
Yep. The 15, yes, and we could, we could adjust it later as need be. Or we could, you know, yeah.
Is it going to read May, May?
It reads May. And it specifically reads May for two reasons. One is that it's always read May since 2003. And we want to kind of keep with what we've always been doing as opposed to, so as to not endanger our grandfathered in amount. And also because that makes it very appropriate because things change. And I don't think we can guarantee this. It's a really wonderful program, but we may not be able to do it every year. And so
We're going to do it every year. Find a way. That dude loved it.
I think too, it's trying to
It's amazing just how, how, how much of a big deal it is. I mean, it's really, it's so, I don't know. You probably could realize more economic contributions from it if there was more ways to get money from people, but I don't know, some things you gotta just hang on to.
Well, I'm referring to the grant program.
We could get a little, little things. What is it, sparklers?
The other, the other thing, I'm cutting you off now. The other thing that we would be looking at is with Main Street to have some accountability and to actually have like an MOU with them as we do it to make sure that the things that they are doing for the visitor center, for decisions that are made, things like that, do need to run through the city too, to make sure that everything's on the up and up with that as well. So I think that is something that, as the person who also is kind of overseeing that piece of it, I am going to want. Yeah, and I, I would just say
It's been trying to do that.
Well, right.
You've been very good.
One of the things, but again, it might not always be Susan. And we got to look forward.
And it's also, there are like very technical questions. And so some of the other minor changes in here, we actually made it yearly accounting instead of like quarterly because poor Dina gets like these receipts in quarterly. We've made it that it's an actual report, like so somebody has to like report on what were the outcomes as opposed to just shoving in some receipts, which is the kind of thing that happens. And those are not Susan necessarily, but for the TLT grants, there's sort of very variations of what people turn in to show that they did what they did. So the committee is also going to work on accountability for that. And so Melissa, I would actually, so we, we have a first and a second on this, but then I would say after that, I, well, we can, I would say direct you by consensus to definitely, let's move forward with that MOU with the, with that, with our third-party organization, I would, I think is a really good idea, as you identified. And I have, I sent you the sample, but I can send it to you in a different format from the LOC.
I have it, but that's why I wanted to
Does the fire department contribute to that, to the, that we know of? Are they, the fire department, are they like a, a year in, year out contributor to that event?
I think they
They just set the fireworks off.
They do, they set them off.
And then they monitor all night long.
Money and then they split it with the Jubilee, 50 for them, 50% for the Jubilee is how I remember it.
I wish.
It's too wishes.
Yeah. So in that, I mean, these are some of the ideas I think that people are bringing up are things that have happened in the past or whatever. And, and as we were just saying a little while ago, Jen, we recognize that you guys are a new team. And there's a lot that changed with, things have changed kind of COVID and, and just that you're putting it together in a new way. And so anyway.
Reserve could be sponsored.
And by the way, we also have started a very active sponsorship program and don't, and are, are very aggressively, Marlene's been doing a great job and Katie too, getting businesses and organizations and individuals to step up. So it's not like we're just counting on TLT funding.
That's great. And I really appreciate also, I thought it's very cool this year that you guys are focusing on existing building, existing businesses on Main Street and all that kind of stuff to try to, to think, to be thoughtful about how to make this event be beneficial to the, to our community's businesses. So thank you. Okay, well, so we're going to keep moving on. And, yes, that's the thing we got to do. Thank you. So I think we've got the first and second, so we'll call for the vote. Counselor Levandal?
Yes.
Counselor Rask?
Yes.
Counselor Webb?
Yes.
Counselor Pogwizd?
Him, yes.
Counselor Burns?
Yes.
Counselor Brennan?
Yes.
Okay. And then one other thing on that, so I mentioned moving forward with the agreement. The other thing we have to move forward on is really thinking about how to roll this out well. And uh, Joseph, I should have asked you this too. Do we need to do that as a second reading? Do, is this the first reading? Do we need to do a second reading on this kind of ordinance?
Usually, yes. Anything that deals with code modifications to uh, the municipal code requires two readings. Uh, you could do it in one reading by reading it in full, but I don't think any of us want to sit here and read in three pages out loud.
Okay. So what I would, one of the things that has come up is we really need to, we had wanted to, the finance committee had wanted to roll this out to start collecting on July 1st because that is sort of how the, the fiscal years are broken up. It's coming up out really quickly and we have to get the word out to people. We have to figure all of that jazz out. And so I am going to propose that we maybe as part of that meeting that we're going to plan for next uh, week at 4:00 PM, that we make it a special meeting and do the second reading of this ordinance at that time. That way we'll get it done. And then that will give our staff a little bit more time to come up with those letters that are going to have to go out to the people that are the ones who collect this fee for us. Okay? Does that make sense? Because that's going to be, we need to be thoughtful about that on top of everything else. We've got to figure that one out. So if anybody wants.
We charge the fund for um, administration?
Yes. Yep. It's 5%. And I don't know, I have not gotten as advanced to know where that fits in here. 5% goes to the people who collect and 5% goes to the city for administration. So it's really another 10%. So it's in here, but.
Somewhere. Mysterious. Okay.
It is. It's all mysterious, it seems.
Yeah. And anyway. Okay. So moving on to the next item, which is the TLT committee's grant recommendations.
I'll make a motion to approve the TLT many grant recommendations.
My second.
Any discussion? Okay. Counselor Brennan?
Yeah.
Counselor Burns?
Yes.
Counselor Pogwizd?
Him, yes.
Counselor Lovendall?
Yes.
Counselor Rask?
Yes.
Counselor Webb?
Webb, yes.
Okay. Okay. The next item, 11D. Melissa, do you want to just give us a little update on this?
So this, so basically, we have had the Port Orford um, city handbook. As I understand it, there was one done in 2016 or had been done before, but then there was a new one that was put together in 2016. That still was valid. And then there was another one brought to council and sort of blessed by council in 2021. But the, when I got here, the document from 2021, the page numbers were wonky. It was, I mean, it was, it wasn't, it wasn't great at all. So when I got here, one of the things as we talk about fixing the ABCs of the government here is to make sure that these rules or these, this handbook is what's given to employees. We go over it once a year. And basically, anything that is not covered in the um, if you want that. Anything that's not covered in the collective bargaining agreement on either of our two unions needs to be covered in this document. So if there are people who are not part of the union, we still need kind of rules of engagement. The other piece to this was that um, I've gone over it, Dina's gone over it. We've really looked at it to make sure that it is aligned. And we had to send it through.
Hey, you guys, quiet in the peanut gallery.
We had to send it through the uh, CIS to get the new updated things on paid leave, Oregon and other things in there that, that would have to be in our documents.
The union get it as well.
I, we have to get it adopted here and then yes, it'll give it to the.
Just because they have made it sink in the past because they did not get it.
So this, this again is lower than the CBA, but yes, yeah. So we will get it to them. We wanted to have it come through forward first to say, this is what we think it should be and then take it to them and then we can.
So.
Are you asking for this to be approved today?
Not.
Well, it's in, that's.
That was, it was, it was sent with the link and did it.
I don't have all of that consumed in my mind.
Okay. Well, we can, we can, we don't have to pass it tonight.
We can do it now.
Do this as a matter of.
That's what I was asking. This is, we're not being asked to approve this tonight.
Well, we could, or we could say we want to put it off until next time. We can uh.
It's not the kind of thing I can, my mind can wrap around.
Okay. So I would.
I would enter.
I went through it and I, it looks as good as I'm ever going to be able to say it looks good.
I read through it. Think I've covered all your bases.
There's way more bases than I could have imagined.
So what do you guys think? So what, I'm hearing two things. I'm hearing that a couple of people have read through it and think uh, we should, can trust our staff and
I'll go ahead and move to approve the employee handbook as, as it is.
How you want to do it.
So CIS has given their, their, their good.
Discussion.
They didn't have nothing that needed to be changed on their end.
They did. So when I got in here, this was something that had been hanging out with the two union negotiations that were passed due, and this was a major thing that had been, had been out. So then we picked it back up to, to do that. And it's taken this long to sort of go through and make sure that it's all copacetic and whatever. You don't have to do this right now. We, we put the link in there, but it's just something that again, has been dangling out. That's like, we have to have an updated document because we're working on a 2016 document that doesn't have the new rules and regulations and things like that in it. So my proposal will be that once a year, we hand it out, make sure all the employees see it again, do all of it, whatever. And then bring it to you. Because there was even question of do we, does it have to come to council? You know, like is it, is it some, is this like an operational manual that's an, under operations and administration? Or is this something that needs to be done through the council? That's why I brought it here though. So you folks can look at it.
Yes, policy, policy, policy. The term policy.
Needs counsel.
Yeah, yeah. And so, and a lot of it, right. And that's why it's like, okay, yeah, we do need to bring it to council and we will do that. And so that's what.
Most important, CIS and the union.
So I, I would, I, my input is that I would prefer to read that before I voted in favor of it. Just because it's.
It's big.
It's, it's big and wordy. Um, it looks good. I mean, like.
Thank you. See, that's the my thing. Yes, that was my big, that was my big thing.
Looks good. Very good.
Okay. Well, so we have a first and a second to, to adopt it. Yes. And so the question is, shall we, I can call for the vote or we can amend it to, it sounds like there are three people at least who would like to.
I would like more time to review. I haven't had a chance to look at it since it's not so.
I can't through it, but I would like to read it.
Sure. So that sounds like we have four people who would like to read it. So maybe we could amend, either withdraw the motion and.
I'll withdraw the motion.
I withdraw my second.
Okay. Can I have then, what, I will entertain, entertain a motion to defer this uh, continue this item to the next meeting. And if people want a paper version, I encourage you to come and get it. Maybe Joseph, you could help have them available soon so that you can start tackling it.
So that, that's the other thing that I'll say is that this has been in the packet with the link and all that, the, for the last, you know, while, which is what we, we were asked to do. But again, if you ever find something like that, that you're like, I really want a paper copy, just come ask for it or get it. Yes, sir.
I need a paper copy every day.
Every link, you want a paper copy of every link?
Well, I, I like to have something to take notes on. So.
Okay.
Yeah. And it, it does go, I'll just underscore, that is something that we, we did discuss early on. And it's just been, we have so many things in this packet that um, that we know our staff is working on all these things all the time. So it is good to try to, I mean, to make the effort to respect their time to um, yeah, prepare and read things ahead of time. I, I only got through page 11 myself. So.
Read it, but to have it in front of you to write notes on is just the way I do business. And personally, I never have asked anything from the city of Port Orford, but I don't feel like I should have to print my own documents with my printer at home.
Right. No, I agree with that. Sure.
And one of the other thing along those lines is that um, something like this, we could probably spend an hour going over this. But if you read it ahead of time, then you could go and ask Melissa, hey, what's this? Like, what is this about? And, and then we, it'd save us time in the meeting. So I would recommend.
It can be changed. Yeah.
Recommend that. And then you can bring the things to the meeting, like if there's something that, you know, if it doesn't make sense. So anyway, I am going to point out one thing that has to be changed in here, which is the spelling of retaliation, which looks like.
Retaliation.
Looks like you're going to the store and go, go shopping. Anyway. Okay.
Make a note.
That AI document there.
Okay. Moving on, we are here now to uh, number 12, uh, considerations, citizen considerations. Do we have anybody? Dave, do you have any considerations to add? Anybody in the audience online that would like to uh, speak at citizen considerations? Okay. Hearing none. I will move on to staff considerations. Melissa or Joseph, do you have any considerations? Okay. Counselors, does anybody have any? Yes?
Just a quick one, and Greg's already left, that I can't say enough how much planning has done for us on this document that we had to go through.
Oh, yeah.
Realistically, looking at the size of that document, everything they covered, we had very little change on it, really.
And there could be some real effective um, policy.
Yeah. So you guys were super thorough on it. Thank you.
We did. We spent a lot of time and we had lots.
Yeah. And what was really cool about that too, is we did get the grant, the planning grant that helped Crystal and do it. But I mean, you guys did it, but you know, it, it helps to have that support and Joseph too. I don't know how that worked for you. You had probably extra work to do, but it worked, I think, pretty well to do that.
Thank you, Joseph. Please, please um, thank the planning commission at the next meeting for me.
I'll make it. Thanks.
Excellent.
We all appreciate it.
Yes.
It's on the record in the minutes.
That's excellent. Thank you so much. I, I think we all feel that way. Uh, Gary?
I wanted to point this out. Um, ADAPT, as you all might know, um, is taking over the healthcare at the Coast Community Health Clinic Building. And they are, are continuing their services. It sounded like they were even upping their services at the ADAPT building downtown and the now gray building that was blue. And um, they acquired the Umpqua Bank Building. And um, they're doing this connecting point and it's um, about um, HIV and AIDS testing and outreach. And they're going to bring in, they're going to have a shower there and they're going to have a laundry there. And um, they're going to.
At the old Umpqua Bank or at the, at the CCH, at the Umpqua Bank?
The Umpqua, the old Umpqua.
Okay.
And I just met with um, one of the staff there. They had four people there today. So every third, um, first and third Thursday, they'll have a crew. And um, and they'll be helping our, they'll be receiving um, hypodermic needles and um, will offer treatment for anybody that's interested in getting off whatever they're on and um.
So this is for drug addiction services?
For the community.
Okay. And you've shared this with our law enforcement department? Probably be good. There's Hank. We can give it to him.
I have, um, I have something that I just want to quickly share with everyone. In 2015, um, the Oregon Senate introduced a bill, Senate Bill 941. And it was the Oregon Firearms Safety Act. And within that, uh, there were some very egregious um, points that this city sat down and wrote a resolution in opposition to that firearm bill, along with 19 other jurisdictions. That made it to the legislature and the legislature changed that law, the law to ease some of those restrictions that many found unacceptable. One of them was that you couldn't uh, pass a firearm to a child. About a month ago, my daughter, her husband uh, for whatever reason, became violent and uh, sought to take her life. And I was able to pass a firearm to her and um, I believe that saved her life. And I want to uh, put it out there that what we do, little things can have huge effect on, on everybody. And, and thank you for uh, everything you do for the city of Port.
Very glad it worked out.
Yeah. No, it was uh, not the phone call you want to get. All right. You know.
Any other counselor consideration? Um, I'm going to make a mayor consideration and um, Hank, I'm glad you're here for this one. So we heard earlier during the public comments about um, some citizen concerns related to the houseless situation at Ray's Woods. And um, I think it would be really great as a follow-up to get an update from our law enforcement officers as to what's going on there because I thought we were enforcing those time, place and manner rules. And it sounds like what these people were reporting doesn't reflect that. So I'd kind of like to understand and hear what's going on. So maybe we can do that.
Can we get a quick update from Hank on that?
Yeah, if you want to, that'd be great. If you can do that. Did you hear that earlier part, by the way?
I did. Thank you, Hank.
Okay.
And I don't think that's on. Anyway, before there being too many calls there, we agree. I don't have an answer for that. We just handle them as they come in and we check it daily when there's no calls, just to check it and try and make sure people are behaving. But there's a lot of time when we're not on duty. So.
What about the thing about, like, I seem to remember that ordinance was people had to leave at a certain time.
Yeah, we're, we're fudging it and enforcing that. But there's also questions at the state legislature level, level because of what's going on in Grant's Pass. So far, everybody's listening to us and when we, are my officers and I contact them and give them the spiel about time, place, manner, when you got to be moved on, everybody nods in agreement and then they disobey a day or two later and we get, they get cited. I mean, it's, it's a revolving door that never ends. It's just the teeth part of it. It just never ends. I don't know. I don't have the answer.
I know. None, that's what the problem is.
A lot of it is some things that she's been researching and it's, it's a, it's come down to a council decision on how far y'all want to push it now. Is this like? To make the neighborhood, make the neighbors happy. You know, to make things whole, to make everybody, make everybody happy.
You know, when we, we had that issue a few years ago, when I started that end-to-end group and um, and there was consideration of the city property that you and I walked at the time behind Car Care and David.
McCutchen's.
Boatyard. And there's wetland and there's no neighbors around that property. And um, it seemed like it still could be considered.
Was there not a push a week ago about trimming all that up? And I kind of liked that idea. If it's a little less attractive for people to hide in the brush and do bad things, maybe that's a better thing.
But do we want to keep it there, you think? I mean, would.
Oh, I, I'm not at your pay level, but.
You know the property I'm talking about?
Wherever we put it, there's going to be people angry who are next to wherever we put it.
Well, do you know the property though, that's behind Car Care?
Yeah, but isn't a, a large piece of that privately owned by um, I, I know who owns it actually.
McCutchen owns the boat. And in between that is Terschner.
It's a right of way.
It's a right of way.
I haven't thought about that honestly.
And then it goes into wetlands.
How big is it compared to what's at Ray's?
It's plenty big enough.
It's long and skinny.
Eighty foot by 100 or.
I'll have to run that by my guys and see what, and I'll give you an opinion on it. I'll let you know. Cause I don't have, I don't know.
It seemed at the time like it'd at least be worth considering.
Okay.
It'll have to be brushed up too.
Yeah.
And I think the question is, we, I mean, one of the questions is we have to make sure that it's, you know, I would say that it's like an equivalent quality of place type of situation, you know, given what's going on.
Really not that far from.
Yeah.
Ray's. There's no neighbors adjoining the property.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So the group that come forward today sounded like they were considering a lawsuit.
Right.
Yeah, I heard that, too.
When, when people mention that, you know, you gotta somewhat take them at face value. I think those folks have had a tough run of it, to be honest with you, at times.
I don't think, I don't think that they, the very courts that would be hearing the case are the ones that made us put them there. I, I, you know, I mean, how do you argue that, that, that we are respons? I get their point, and I feel terrible for those, for those people.
Right, right.
I just don't know. But every time we talked about put it anywhere, then those neighbors would come in, you know?
I'm just saying, this property has no neighbors.
I, well.
I mean, there's nobody living next door.
I get what you're saying. I, I, and I agree, it's, it's.
There's houses in the area, though.
There's, it's.
There's still houses in the area, no matter where you go.
It's, it's just across the street.
Right next door is the thing.
Well, I think the question at this point is, rather than discuss this, I mean, is, do we want to bring this up for a discussion at a future meeting?
Let's get through the budget session.
No, I, that's kind of what my feeling has been, but I just wanted to bring it up, and that's why I'm glad you were here, Hank, to be able to give us an update, because it sounded pretty, I mean, when you have people come and complain with some of the things that are said, some of them were fairly.
Do we have exclusionary language in that, 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 like, if you, if you do it three times, then you can't come here anymore? Yes, we do trespass people for certain periods of time. And usually they comply with that because they don't want to have another visit with our municipal court judge for violating it for a while, and they come back eventually. I just wonder if we, if we.
They almost always the same people, or do we, are there new ones?
If we're dealing with locals who've been here for a certain amount of years, the ones who are just passing through, recently, some citations were issued to a father, son, or maybe it was just the son out of Alaska. They're gone. They'll never show up for their citation, and that's fine. Problem solved. So, yeah.
Locals know there's lots of places.
We deal with them again and again and again for different reasons, and sometimes at that area, you know, Mark checks it when he comes on every day. He goes, walks through there. But I, I liked the idea a week ago of it, cleaning it down to the bare ground so it looks really nice. It'll be less attractive for some people to hide in the brush and do bad things.
Well, it sounds like that, the minimum, that's, I mean, the neighbors did request that.
I like that.
Like something that would be really good to do.
Fire danger, too.
At a minimum.
Yeah, that's right around the corner.
The only thing I remembered when we were having the discussion at one point was, in its counter to the idea of to just keep it open so you can see everything, is that people were wanting some sort of screen of it from the people who come into Ray's.
Well, I think the vegetation right along that property line. And then, but, but it, it's like they've carved out a little niche there. That, if that stayed where they couldn't look on, but all the rest of it went away.
Yeah.
Then it seems like.
Yeah. Can't we say they can't use that prop, that, we can exclude places without.
They, what we, we learned was that they want you actually to identify the place where people can be. They even want you to put a map where the people can be, and they, they want you to say where people can be.
Done with this. I really did. I thought we were done with it.
But I think what happened last time is when we were enforcing it, people who were, you know, did find other places who didn't like the time, manner, and place aspect, and which is not a good solution, but it is, it helps with some of the. I think one of the things that we learned about, too, was that if we, and some municipalities have said, this is the place you can be, and even put it like fences around and things like that, well, then if things, there were fights or things, or there was assaults, or there were other things that happened there, then it almost becomes state, state harm, state ordained harm, because if I tell you, you have to go to that spot, and that's the only place you can go, then if something bad happens to you, then we are liable because that was the place we told you you could be.
You almost need to manage it.
Correct, and then.
You could do like a maximum persons per thing or something, because it seems like the problems occur when there's a larger, yeah, you know.
Because we had designated it, I remember, on the council, and then that next week, there was like three calls a day because they weren't getting along.
Yeah.
And then we went to the, you know, telling and giving them 72 hours, and then they were all gone. They were gone for quite a while.
Well, you have to leave at eight in the morning, but I think we never got there till 10:00 in the morning, officer, just because.
But, but eventually it was way easier to find another place, which there are all places all over town.
Just outside of town.
We need to put it on the agenda for after we finish the budgets.
It's, it's.
Yeah, I mean, this is a problem that's going to go on forever and, you know.
And we wish we had a better solution and.
And there could be some, something that comes out of the lawsuits and that helps, will give us more tools.
And I think the thing that, that I didn't realize was when we saw the Grants Pass decision by the Supreme Court, what happened is Oregon kind of set their sights on this idea of time, place, and manner. So even though the, the Supreme Court said, these are the rules, because Oregon had made more stringent rules for the, for cities, that's what we have to go by. So if, if there hadn't have been the Oregon rule to it, then it would be like other places, that it was just the Supreme Court decision, whereas now there are more.
I didn't realize that.
We, we, and I didn't either, until I heard that. And so Oregon has more stringent rules for cities, you know, than, than what the Supreme Court would say. So yes, while Grants Pass technically won that suit, it didn't really change much on the ground. And so there's so much nuance in this. And I think it's, it's, you know, we need to treat people with dignity, and we need to, to do that. We've all said that, you know, a bunch of times. And I do believe that there is, you know, we have people who are experiencing homelessness in this economy who have kids at Driftwood and have kids at Pacific and who have that, you know, that are, that are Orphonites, right? There are people. And so I think it's just trying to mitigate it, particularly in the summertime, as people are more mobile. Everybody's more mobile in the summer and visiting here and wanting to enjoy here, and, and this population is no different. So I think, you know, again, being thoughtful with our law enforcement, being thoughtful of how we're handling folks.
There, we cannot.
We can do a better, we can do well.
Overlook the, the real. There's danger there, too. And, and I know firsthand, because one of them came into my house and my back door, and, and here was this drunken man with the bottle of wine that he stole, and he was hiding out from, and, and this was, this happened in my home. And, and so like, this was a real thing that we don't want our people to have to face that either.
Right.
And, you know, you say lock your doors. I was mad they wouldn't lock, you know, but, but, but it's real. There, there, there is a threat of, of harm and, and that we can't over, let our hearts over.
Right.
You know, there's, there's danger to our people here, too. It's really a sad situation.
And so I think the key is trying to work with staff and trying to walk that line as best we can. But we, as, as you know, you said it, policy, we, we can enforce what you folks decide, and that, that is what I think where the rub is, because it's a, if it was an easy solution, everyone across this nation would have the same rule, and it would be figured out, right? So.
Just haven't put any energy into mental health.
No, no, for.
As a society.
Thirty years. This state in particular, we're terrible.
So.
Okay, so let's.
We continue to work on it.
We will continue to work on that, and I think.
Got to get crazier every day. Is that what you mean?
We did not, we did not direct staff, or is it going to be a volunteer effort to do that brush removal? I don't know if that can be a volunteer effort, or if that should be coordinated with staff or what, because.
Love to help with that, I bet. Wouldn't they? The church people would love to help with that.
Oh, we could get a volunteer group pretty easy.
Yeah, anybody, yeah.
So I guess that can be, is that, do you think that's a volunteer task, Hank, that that would be okay to do? Well, I know, but we were asking for input from law enforcement, and I know, we got yours saying, yeah, that you thought was okay. I don't think we heard from.
Start.
Yeah, okay, great.
So that's pretty much your goal.
Yeah, and I guess what I would say is, we, I mean, I think our public works fellows would like to help with that, but right now with the community building and the, all the things, we just, we don't have the staff capacity to, to help specifically with that. I don't know that we have it at this point, so having help from volunteers would be amazing.
Yeah, but does, do, do we have a trailer or anything?
Sure.
Public works have a trailer that can be left there to load up, because there's, you know, they dump free at the thing.
Right.
And we have a free dump day coming up, I think.
This next week.
There's a free dump days next week.
We're all in.
Yeah.
All right.
This whole week.
And that's just yard debris?
Seventeenth to the, yeah.
We. Tell our people that. We should encourage our citizens to participate in that.
Dave Bassett's got, Hank mentioned, he's got a dump dumpster, dump truck, and we could even maybe get CTR just to say that they would donate to the cause.
Well, for brush, they do that already.
Okay, so we got a plan there. Moving on here, we just have to briefly touch base on the future meetings. So we had already talked about, we have a budget committee, the first budget committee meeting next Thursday, May 22 at 5:00. We are going to tack onto that a special meeting ahead of that for a council budget decision, and also a special meeting to do the, we'll conclude in that the second reading of the TLT ordinances. We have the second budget meeting scheduled for May 29, also a Thursday. And then we do want to recognize that the next regular meeting of council is going to have to be on Wednesday, June 18, because the regular council meeting on the 19th is the federal holiday, Juneteenth, which is also a holiday that in our collective bargaining units and in our employee handbook is a holiday for staff. So Wednesday, June 18 is the date of the next official meeting.
But we have budget, the 29th and the 20.
Twenty-second and the 29th, and there may be some other meetings if need be. There may be. Okay, excellent. And with that, I, I went, we went very long, but we, I adjourned this meeting at 9:13.
It's been longer.